Mics are on.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, I'm Tom Reedy, an attorney with Bacon and Wilson here in AMR's here on behalf of 462 Main in its application for a modification of the site plan as the chairwoman mentioned. With me this evening, to my right, is the manager and member of 462 Main, John Robleski. We also have our civil designer, Bill Osley, and our architect, Christine Royal. So as the chairwoman mentioned, we've got some changes. We were here and we received approval August 27th. It was for a mixed-use building with 16 units and 30 beds, 32 parking spaces. So in the interim, John had some time on his hands, looked at some of the other projects that were being approved, looked at the market and thought, how can I hit that market better? And how can I make the site better? How can I give it more amenities? And so that's really what he's done. And so he's increased the units by eight, but I think the notable pieces increased the bedrooms by five. And so what he's done is really changed some of those units. He was approved for four one-bedroom, 10 two-bedroom, and two three-bedroom. And he is requesting approval for four studios, 10 one-bedroom, nine two-bedroom, and one three-bedroom. And so there's a shift to studios and one-bedrooms because I think probably what the board is seeing, I know what I'm seeing in town, is that there's a push for more single-bedroom units, whether they're in the form of studios or one-bedrooms. I think you had a project down on Southeast Street show that I think you've seen from Archipelago downtown. I think just anecdotally, talking to a lot of the different landlords in town, that's what they're seeing. So John has seen that and wants to modify this design. I think you'll see tonight that the architecture is very similar. The footprint has only increased by 800 square feet. Gross floor area has increased by 2,700 square feet. And then I think he's made some other changes to the site that he'll go over in a minute that have increased utility, provided additional amenities, you know, covered bike storage area, indoor trash. And then there's a shift of the ADA spaces to make them more accessible. I think they make more sense where they are now. And then a relocation of the transformer and then the electric vehicle charging stations to be in close proximity to that transformer. So with that, what I'll do is I'll turn it over to John to talk through the changes. And what we've got is an overlay, and I can always toggle. I've got the approved plans from before and I've got the proposed plans, so I can always toggle back and forth if you need it. But without further ado, John Robleski.
Thank you. Good to see you all again. Happy New Year. So this is an overlay of the old and the new. So the lighter colors of the building are the approved plan from August. The darker shaded, kind of rust-colored are the additions to the footprint of the building. So this area here is two feet by 56 feet. This is about six feet by 56 feet. This area here is about 10 and 1/2 by 14. And then this area is seven by 56, I believe. The office area stayed the same. That's 22 by 25. So the 550 square foot office area remains the same. The light gray parking area is the new layout. I think, yeah, if you bring it back down. So the upper part of the parking area hasn't changed at all. What we did, the existing barn that's there, that is this light colored square, 20 by 20, that is in close proximity to that tree there. And there's already pavement. That dotted line is the current pavement. So we thought it best to move the island further south to allow that tree's roots to have more space rather than underneath the blacktop like it is now. So in doing that, we reduced this to three parking spaces where the old one, there was four parking spaces there. There was one, two, the two handicap, or maybe just three. But anyways, that allowed us to get a little more room in this area for the covered bike storage, which would be like a shed roof coming off of the back of the building there, and to redo that back section of the existing structure. And just add 32 square feet right in this area here to allow a little more room for trash cans right in that area inside and allow interior bike storage for the winter on the back half of that. So this back section here would be interior bike, trash recycling here. But if you remember the previous plan, which was this kind of dark line for the parking, how tight this was here, that always kind of bothered me. And I'd rather have more green space there for the tenants to enjoy and make it more like a residential property rather than have blacktop, you know, all the way through here. So in doing that, we were able to do away with five parking spaces there. We gained one up here, one up here, by redoing the handicap. The handicap got moved to the center of this backside. So there's, we gained two spaces back there and we added three up front here. You can go back down. So these three new spaces up front here are three compact spaces. And dealing with the ever-source and the location of the transformer and the EV charging stations, they want the charging stations in close proximity to the transformer. So this kind of helped out in both directions with that. This handicap van space here is better in that location. It gives direct access to the office area, which is apt to have the most handicap going in there. And these spaces pretty much stayed the same. You can see the light gray. We actually pushed it back, I think, about two and 1/2, three feet here. Stormwater area is still in the same area. There's like a preceptor, catch basin type thing right here. So we tried to get the transformer on that side versus where it is over here. But this transformer where it is there, the whole front of the house kind of slopes up from the street, if you remember. And this section in front of the porch, where the tall shrubs are, actually is about two feet higher than the edge of the pavement here. So what we're doing is we're dropping this gray down to about 92 and 1/2 here, 93 on the corner. And the transformer will be at 93, which kind of blends with this side lot line here. It's 93, 94 there. So we're just going to do a little like retaining landscape wall to hold the existing shrubs there. Then the transformer, we drop down like a foot and a half. Transformer is about six feet, 6'6" tall and five feet wide. Those shrubs that are in front of the house, and we have some pictures of them, are seven feet tall. And one's like an evergreen year-round, the other couple in the center are burning bush, I think. So that'll be actually two feet lower. The top of the transformer will be two feet lower than those shrubs. And we're going to add some more screening on this side. I emailed the direct neighbor here and showed him what we wanted to do and asked if they had any input. I have not heard from them. I said, you know, would you rather have a fence there or just shrubs? And they think shrubs would be better to blend in with the existing shrubs that are there. And when you're looking up from Main Street, that transformer just kind of be blended into the shrubs. So that's, I think, the big changes in a nutshell to the site plan. All the other setback requirements and everything are the same. The building overall, the old footprint, this section here was 39 and 1/2 feet wide. We dropped it to 39 feet for the entire section of building there now. And we shortened the entire building by a foot. The old one is a 168 and the new one is 167 from north to south. But the setbacks here are the same. The north setback, 20 feet to the property line is the same. This little parking area is the same. Again, to save this mature tree, this tree is on the other property, but this one here, again, as I explained about the island there. And there's actually three shrubs right here that I didn't know what kind they were, but I had a landscaper look at them. They're a Nohke Cypress. Never heard of them, but they're nice. He said, you know, what you should do is transplant those over to the transformer. So that's a possibility. But I got to look and see how big they get because they say Nohke or Shinoki trees. But they're only about six and 1/2 feet, seven feet tall now. So that's a possibility. But I'm going to try to work with the neighbor there and just make sure they have screening. And I think the downstairs of that property there, I'm not even sure if there's any residential people that live in that house on the corner of Gray Street. It's the Center for Spanish Studies. So I think that's about it as far as the changes.
Good. So, I mean, if there are any questions about those changes, we're happy to answer them. There was a stormwater report done. There are no changes. We still comply with Massachusetts stormwater standards. I think that's with Jason Skeels. Right now, we don't anticipate. I mean, he was on-site with Bill and there weren't any issues. We just haven't received a final sign-off from Jason. So from what we understand, there's a very good likelihood that this is going to be continued. And so we would expect that prior to that next hearing date, we'll have something definitive from Jason saying, you know, no problem. So that's the site. We can turn it to architecture if you'd like.
Do you have any questions on grading? Because the site engineers here, the grading stayed about the same with the exception of the three parking spaces in the front there, I believe, and a little bit around the trash area, just to kind of mesh that slab for the outside bike cupboard area. Other than that, it's pretty much the same. Is that right, Bill?
Yes, sir.
So are you going to have the architect come up and show the renderings and such?
Tell us the plan.
Yeah, that might be good to have that.
Can I just question for the presentation now, just now?
Sure.
Just, can you do it like the previous, the number of parking spaces lost?
Zero.
It's the same number. We just reconfigured where those five are in front of that building where it was kind of tight. So we put two in that back lot and the three up front, but it's the same number of parking spaces.
Same number, but now, and then have their in compact car spaces in the prior?
It's all, those numbers are all the same.
Just effectively now, there's, could he put more parking spaces here? Sure. But I think on balance, given the data that he's seen from Spruce Ridge, what we've seen, you know, from 70 University Drive, for example, you know, the parking just isn't needed for this type of use, the breakdown.
Just ask, just, just, if I can go back and forth and I can see the numbers.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have one question, which goes, comes before the architecture, I think. Is it still your intention to not allow undergraduates, given the new configuration of apartments?
Well, I think undergrads aren't a bad thing if you screen them properly. For instance, I have a house on 734 Main Street that's always been undergrads, and I've never had a problem. The carpet there, I ended up replacing in about 20 years. You know, the interior doors, I lost two hollow core interior doors, you know, from boyfriend-girlfriend disagreements. But that's it, you know, since 1982. And it's just, it's all how you run the property and how you communicate with the tenants and their parents.
I understand that. But you made a point last time we were here that there would be no undergraduates.
Right.
That's now changed.
If they're properly screened, I would accept them.
I mean, I think, so part of it is that after the last conversation here, probably my fault, said to John, why would you limit yourself? Nobody else?
And I've had another couple of management companies say that. And I think it was you that brought up the Airbnb thing. Somebody asked about Airbnb and how they can control that. And I looked into the Airbnb rules and regulations, and they have a clause in there about third-party, you know, how they cannot accept third-party releases. So in my leases, I have the sublet agreement. And I checked with Attorney Farber, and he says, no. He says, you're covered because they cannot sublet without my approval and they cannot list it on Airbnb or any of those things, you know, without written approval.
Go ahead, Jack.
Just a minor thing. It looks like you're working the island to protect the tree there. And I'm just wondering, we've seen along historic roads there that the trees apparently are sensitive to the pavement if it's near there. And I'm just wondering if it's sufficient or if you had, you know, arborists look at it or that sort of thing, prepared to lose a tree, I guess.
Well, yeah, I had an arborist look at it, and that's why we changed the island. Because if you see there on the upper part, the old pavement, the light gray and that dotted line, that's pavement there already.
Okay.
So the roots are already underneath pavement there. So we wanted to open it up and let the trees, you know, root system, which is underneath that barn or the garage right now, once it's opened up, it's more root system for that tree.
So it's actually going to be better?
It's a healthier situation.
Yep.
All right. Great, thank you. If we could see the renderings of, do you have? Okay.
So if you had to put more parking spaces in, in that part that's green, how many? I can't quite see how many space that is.
Yeah. I think my attorney misspoke there. I don't think I really can put any there because we brought the building out farther and you have to be eight feet away from the building. The only way we can add is to do away with that tree and island and gain maybe two spaces there. Or go farther to the north and add two spaces there, which is going to compromise that nice tree that the neighbors really want to have stay there. But I think, you know, the parking, I've done some recent research, and there's a lot of places across the country that have done away with parking limits for new construction. They want the economic factor, I guess, to be more beneficial. And they're finding out, there was one study done in Cambridge and Boston, that 36% of the parking spaces there are unused. And that actually equates to the situation we explained about my property next door. I've got 34 parking spaces there for 12 units. That's 140% over what's required, you know, two per unit. And right now, there's like 11, 12 spaces that go unused. I have 23 cars there, last three years in a row. So all that data that's been done, really since 2015-ish to July of 19, is when the Boston report came out, backs it right up. Just the millennials, they're not buying cars, they're not buying houses. They want to get on that phone and pay their rent and find an Uber and everything. It's just the way it is now. Plus the location, you know, being downtown. I think that goes part and parcel to the rezoning of that area and kind of encouraging more walkability, so to speak, and less pavement. And as far as overflow park, and I can, you know, work something out and maybe use those spaces next door, but I really don't see that there's going to be an overflow park, especially with the mixed use. Because right now, there's more than one space per residential bedroom, or slightly less than one space, I'm sorry. 35 bedrooms, 32 spaces, but there's shared parking. You go over next door during the daytime, there might be eight or 10 cars parked there. And all the other spaces are open, you know. So same thing here for business during the day. And if some of the residents are leaving, then it works out. Plus breaking it up like this, having the seven or eight spaces in the front there kind of is where the business is. And then residential in the back and then shared at night. I just think it's a better balance.
Okay. Okay, maybe looking at the renderings will help everybody get a better view of the changes. Again, welcome. If you can just introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name's Christine Royal. I'm an architect working with Maple Street Architects based out of Northampton. I can say that we really appreciated the comments and the feedback that you gave us last time about the massing of the building in general, which we took strongly into consideration and into use as we were relaying out the new interior plans. So we still have three steps in the building from the southern side with the office up to the smaller wing of the residential units and then the larger massing of the remainder residential units. We still broke up the facade. We're still running with the same kit of parts as far as the siding and the detailing and the overhangs and the way the windows are joined. So we really worked hard to keep this as similar to the approved version as possible.
Could we see the picture of before?
So that's before?
Yeah. Thanks.
After.
Yeah, that's the before.
Do that again, please.
Before? After!
Right.
That's current.
So you can see the majority of the, the majority of the growth in the massing has been to the north side, which is not highly visible from the street. Really, the stepping that you can see, and I think you have the other rendering, right? Yes. The stepping that you can see, you know, from the street is largely the same.
Is that the current, that's the current proposal?
It is.
The proposal, yes.
This is the previous proposal, same view?
Yes. So I'll, this is like one of those eye exams. So I'll toggle. What's better, one?
And that's the other one.
Sorry. Already messed up. One or two? Two or one?
Yeah, so it is largely the same. You know, we're really breaking down the mass with the clappards running horizontally, the shingling at the eaves, the wood trim detail, you know, giving that horizontality to the mass, which really speaks to the original building on the site as well.
One back one again.
Sure.
Sorry. Thank you.
No, it's good.
What this new rendering does help to illustrate is the stepping in the front that John mentioned to accommodate the three parking spaces out front and the location of the transformer behind the existing signage and in front of the existing shrubbery. Yes, the meters are on the backside now as well.
And the transformer is sort of behind the sign?
In that.
Yeah, that's, it looks a little shorter there.
Yep. Are there any questions?
The utility meters, that's what we were talking.
The utility meters are the...
They're on the backside, the north side of the building.
Correct.
Before, they were kind of in the step of the building there, so they're kind of visible here in this box.
Oh. I'm not sure if you can see them in the original rendering. Did you see that?
May I ask another question?
Sure.
What, and perhaps, could you jog my memory perhaps? Wasn't there an issue with the historical commission and the barn that's behind the current build, the currently existing building? Didn't the question come up?
Yeah.
Sure. We did meet with the historical commission last month, and we reviewed the barn with them. They have given us approval to remove the barn, conditioned on John's continuing pursuit of a buyer or relocation for the barn in the meantime.
Were there any new concerns with the taking down the back and rebuilding the shed area?
No, they were very positive about that.
Okay.
Could we see the side view again, the long view? So I would defer to my colleagues in the panel, but I wondered if the peaked roofs were a little more bigger or a little more centered? Because it just, it looks kind of disjointed to me and kind of odd, especially that little one. Maria?
What, I'm not following you.
I'm just wondering if it could be more symmetrical or the peaked roof on the right could be bigger to make it look more like a separate building?
Honestly, this view is a little misleading because you don't really see it from that angle much. It's really from the street. So the other view is really the public view. In order to get that view, you have to be in the backyard of your neighbor, I think, or just be a really broad. So I'm not too concerned about that view being, you know, sort of not symmetrical and sort of more variegated. I appreciate still the scale stepping back, and it looks like there's enough gable roofs that sort of matches the historic quality of the area. And I appreciate that. No parking was further removed, and I know that's been an issue. But architecturally, I think it still fits the scale and feel of the neighborhood.
Yeah, I agree. It is a little bit more, it's a little larger, a little more blockish. I notice on, from this view, the end, the green, you know, if you toggle back, you know, it is bigger and rises more sharply, but there's enough other details. Yeah, that's the new one, right?
It is.
And then if you go back to the other one. So there were some of the extra detailing on the overhang shading areas with the structure, how it's like a triangle, which is interesting with the eye, I think, and distracts you from the building above. I was just wondering why you removed that and went with the cleaner lines.
Yeah. It is more of a porch detail that we were looking at in this iteration so that the rhythm of the porch posts in the original are picked up along that front end of the new proposed. Yeah, we felt that that kickback bracket to the building didn't really speak to any of the original detailing in the existing building.
So I see what you're, you know, trying to achieve. I just noticed with that other, that kickback bracket, it does sort of draw your eye to that and you notice less of the...
Gives you a longer wait in that.
Yeah, the rise of the building. It was just my first thought, looking at them. Could you go back to the, this is Tom's job tonight.
I'm good for this.
And there seems to be a little less detail in the windows on the front end here in the blue, the office, right? If you go back to the, Tom, you're getting good at this. It just looks like there's a little more detail there again.
Sure. I think that that is not intentional, that we lost some of that shading and detailing in the windows. Our intent isn't to change the window package.
Okay. Maria?
Sorry if I missed this. See how there's three parking spaces in the front in this rendering?
Yes.
Are those new or?
Those are new. That is what John was talking about earlier and the request for the electric vehicle charging stations to be close to the transformer by the utility.
Yeah, because your renderings show one with it, without.
Right. Yes, they weren't there previously, which is why they're not in the other rendering.
I appreciate the electric vehicles and compactness. It's a little bit of a shame that it's so front and center. That's the only thing. I mean, I see in plan, but now that I see perspective, it's like, oh, you know, without the cars there, it looks very nice. But, you know, in reality, you're going to see parked cars pretty close to the sidewalk. But that's just, you know, I'm not sure we can do anything about that.
What about if there was some, like a bed with some bushes in the front on that part? Would that distract and soften a little bit the, because, you know, we're seeing it as asphalt, but if you actually envision three cars there, now suddenly you've sort of got like a parking lot on the front, which, at least they're electric maybe, but, yeah, could that, do you see anything that could happen to soften up that front lawn and maybe do a bed?
Well, why is it doesn't block the sign?
Right.
With the car?
No. No, the sign's right on the corner of the parking. No, the, the sign's right on the corner of the parking.
There's like some speed from that parking space to the sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do something.
So you could look into that, even if there's a low bed, low plants, just something that sort of softens, like, there's the cars.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else have any comments on the front? Chris?
I don't have any comments on the front, but I have comments on the rear of the existing building when you get around to that.
The rear. Okay, so, and Chris, you have a question in the rear later? Okay.
We had this kind of very attractive, kind of, I don't know if it's a Victorian style, but has a little fancy stuff on it, and the building that you're proposing, not so fancy. And I just wondered if there could be something that you could put on the posts that would match more. Do you know, like a little, I don't know the technical term, but I own some myself.
We could definitely look at the detailing and the trim on the posts. I would be hesitant to replicate the existing because it, it is not in original and we don't, you know, want to give sort of a false sense of development, but we certainly could pick up that bracket detail idea and, yeah, as part of the language.
Yeah, sort of tying back into like the previous view where it had the brackets.
Mm-hmm.
Not saying use the bracket, but just some, something that adds-
No, I understand, yeah. We can look at some architectural detailing for that.
Great. Michael, do you, yeah.
Yeah, I, I was very enthusiastic about the original plan in terms of the massing and the relationship of, of the mass of the, of the new building to the old building. I find this one a little more problematic, I don't think it's a deal breaker, but I wonder if there's some way to soften that wall that now faces the street, which has no, no fenestration at all in it. The original plan, as I remember, can you go back to your original one, Tom? Well, it doesn't have it, but it's, it's set back further and you see the windows in the, in the rear building facing the street, and there's no similar, that looks like it, the, the old plan looks like it could be almost two separate buildings that were just close to each other from the street view. This looks like one solid building. And it seems to me that the notion of it being two separate buildings imaginatively fits the notion of infill and the idea of what I think we need to be going for in that general area of town, which is letting the old buildings be the dominant ones visually and having the new buildings be supportive or secondary visually to the original buildings.
Supporting cast.
Hmm?
Supporting cast.
Supporting cast, yes. Here, I think the new, the new building is, is the star, where the old, in the, in the original plan, the old building took the focus. And I wish we could figure out a way, I wish you, as the architect, could figure out a way to de-emphasize the mass of the new proposed building at, to the, to the benefit of the existing building.
Mm-hmm. I certainly appreciate comments on that. I think partially through the color choice and the fact that the existing building is much further forward, that it really reads more clearly from the street. So with the massing, we could look at maybe some window locations that might help break up that, that front facade a little more.
Functionally, what's behind that, where the arrow is now? Is that an apartment?
It is an apartment.
There's no reason that a window couldn't be there, is there?
Not that I can think of off the top of my head.
Could you click back to the old one again? Yeah, so, building on Michael's point, when you look back at the blue building in the back, they were larger windows also that drew your eye more, where I think in the new rendering, they're probably bathroom windows or something.
Those are.
Yeah, so, you know, they almost look undersized a little bit for the wall, but I understand the why, but maybe that's all the more reason why there does need to be something on that green wall or an accent up in the triangle, I don't know. You know, again, we don't want to make it too much of the superstar and more of the support, but, yeah, it doesn't, it, it isn't as pleasing to, from the street as, as it was before.
Yeah.
It's just big.
Well, it is bigger, so, yeah.
Could we look at the side view again? So the green space is nice to have that, that does help break it up. It's hard to see in a rendering because you undersize the, obviously, green in real life is nicer, the trees are nicer, and they will grow. I noticed you don't have a, a tree in that area, like on the right part, you know, I don't know if a tree could fit there, anything that's sort of softened.
Right, we didn't want to mask the building in the rendering. We wanted you to be able to see it, so I think in the landscape plan, you know, we can, we can definitely talk about placement of, you know, different, different plantings, but as far as the renderings go, we really tried to keep those down so that you could see it, yeah.
I understand. So what I was going to say then, if we went back to street view, I don't know if, there's Mr. Reedy, the lawyer, then there's Tom, the clicker here, so, if the clicker can go. I was just wondering, again, when you're looking at it from the street, if there was a tree, you know, in that area, is that, I don't know.
It would, it would make some scale and legibility impact for sure. So from, for me, what I like is the, the rhythm of the facade as you look down this sort of roadway, alleyway, streetway. I think, I find that to be, that rhythm to be really pleasing. I do understand the concerns about the, the massing as the building has gotten larger, but a tree is, is a good idea to help sort of mark that differentiation.
Are there any other questions? I know Chris has one about the, in the back. Is there a certain view that the, that Tom can put up for you?
Maybe they were just getting to describe that and maybe we should let them go ahead and describe that and then I'll make my comment, okay?
I don't, is, okay.
Sure. So as I mentioned earlier, we did review this with the historic committee and you can see in the front, the left two drawings, that the intent is to rebuild the smaller shed-like addition that was probably put on in the 50s. It's hard to really date that piece, with a very similar function, a trash and bike shed, with some exterior covered bike storage as well. And so the other two views are, you know, moving around the north side of that building, looking at the bike shed from, basically, the top ones from the fence line. And this is the plan of it.
So the doors now come, they face the parking lot rather than the north side of the property?
Correct.
That makes sense.
And it also has a covered location for the mailboxes now, you can see that adjacent to the door.
And is there only going to be bike storage in there or?
Bike and trash and recycling.
Ah, there. And I assume, Chris, this is all allowed even though it's sort of in a grandfathered area, it's very close to the property line?
So that was the issue that I wanted to make a comment on. Originally, when you approved this, they were proposing to leave this old structure as it was at the back of the existing building, so now they're proposing to take that old structure down and build something new, which is really more functional and slightly bigger, but that doesn't really matter. But the issue is that the building commissioner has determined that as a result of putting this addition on the existing building, the existing building is non-conforming. It's closer than it should be to the property line. It's four foot six from the property line and the setback on that western side is 10 feet. So that makes the existing building non-conforming, so if you alter a non-conforming building, alter, expand, or I forget what the other word is, but that requires a special permit. So we just discovered this in the last couple of days, that putting this new structure on here is going to require a special permit in accordance with the building commissioner and in section 9.22 of the zoning bylaw. So I think, you know, I've explained it to Mr. Reedy and Mr. Robleski, but the building commissioner recommends that the approval of the site plan review, wait for the special permit public hearing so that you can approve both at the same time. So I'm, I'm getting a little ahead of myself, but my suggestion would be if the applicant and Mr. Reedy wanted to go ahead with this special permit application, they could file it before Friday. Actually, if they could file it tomorrow, that would be really good, and then we'll probably be able to get it on the February 5th planning board agenda, I'm pretty sure. So that would mean, and it's just a, an application, we'd need a butters list, which I think we can get, and a fee, so it's not a big deal, you don't have to submit drawings or anything like that, but I think that would be the route that we would suggest going and try for the February 5th public hearing date.
So we need to continue the public hearing?
We will. I just want to make sure there's nothing else that we need to get from anybody else. Like, yep, oh, and then Janet next, but Chris?
So two things that I would recommend, if Mr. Reedy could get Jason Skiles, the town engineer, to submit an email saying he has no comments or he has some comments, whatever he wants to say, we would need that. And the other thing is, there's been talk recently about locating a propane tank on the site, so either you could treat that as a condition, you know, come back, show the planning board and get approval of a location for the propane tank, or they could have it for you on the 5th of February and then you could approve that as well. And I think those are the only issues that I have.
So that could-
Yeah, no problem. John met with AmeriGas today, so it's a non-issue.
Janet?
So I have a couple of questions. One of them is, could you tell me the estimated rentals for the studio one bedroom, the rents? Just a sense of that.
What their rents would be?
Yeah, just, I mean, I'm not going to put it in stone, but I'm just-
I can only, I guess, comment on what, like, University Drive is rented for, they're similar in size of the one bedrooms, and I believe they're at 1,400?
Not right now, less right now.
Yeah, yeah.
And the studio, like, just if you can run through the-
Studio, I think it'd be like 1,000.
Yeah, I think studios there are 1,150 and one bedroom, I think, is 14.
Yeah, these studios, I think, are a little bit smaller, like 325 square feet, but they built in, you know, a storage area in there, so.
Okay, and then the two bedrooms and the three bedrooms?
Well, there's only one three bedroom, and that's only because where the stairway is to get up to the third floor, or the second floor, rather, we have that area that's above the office that's kind of incorporated into that second floor, same as the last plan. Three bedrooms, I would think probably around 2, 2,000. And what we're trying to do, you know, with the gas company that I met this morning, is the propane is going to be more reasonable than electric as far as heat. And right now, the plan is to pursue supplying the hot water, similar to what they have on University Drive, and including that in the rent, and then have them have a, the bigger units, two bedroom and three bedroom, would have a gas furnace in the central air conditioning. Two bedrooms, to answer that, I think probably around 1,850.
Okay, are there, David?
I, again, my memory might not be, is easily inaccurate, but it seems as if the, the current proposal has the ADA bedroom on the far, on the north end. And I thought that the previous iteration, it was towards the front of the building, towards the commercial space. My question has to do with, it seems as if the three handicap parking spaces, I think there were three, are not in close proximity to the ADA bedroom.
Well, they are.
They are?
Yeah, the first plan, we had no ADA unit, we, because once you go over 20 units, then you need an ADA unit. So this here, the ADA unit is on the north end of the building and the sidewalk with the two parking spaces right there has a slope and it goes right up to that door, so it's actually in closer proximity to it.
Okay.
I think part of it is that originally, and still, all of the first floor units are group one accessible, and as John mentioned, once, once we went over the 20 unit count, we have a group two accessible, which is a more fully accessible unit, and that is located close to the parking.
Thanks for that memory reference.
Janet?
So, I would like at the next hearing to get more information about parking, because it seems to me, like, I went and actually looked at the, the unit, the apartment you have around the corner on a Sunday morning, and there were, out of the 30, how many spaces did you say there were?
34.
34 spaces, 28 were full. And so that was just, you know, I decided Sunday morning was good. And so our bylaw requires two units, two parking spaces per unit, and then there's ways you can waive that, and it's not clear to me what waiver section that you're going for, but I think that I, I need more, or we need more information about actual use and alternatives, like a parking management plan that would reduce expected use. I've been pulling up data about bus use and, you know, and I've asked for information about the number of cars. My, you know, bus, bus use is down over, by 5% over the last five years. There's all this data about people who commute to work, 50% of Amherst residents drive by themselves to work, fortunately, some other people are carpooling. So there's a lot of information, you know, traffic is up, it's not down. If, if people were driving less and using mass transit more, you'd expect those numbers to be the other way, so. And also, maybe if you're going to use University Drive, which is obviously a lot of students that could either walk or take a bus to UMass, that's sort of different than this situation. So I feel like I, I need to apply the waiver that's in the bylaw and I need information that supports it. And so is, you know, and actually, I was thinking the VFW lot across the street, which, you know, I drive by constantly, I'm sorry to say I drive so much, but is often empty and maybe that would be extra space for people, but I think for me, it's very important not just to fulfill the law of the bylaw, but make sure that the people who live in this building have enough places to park their car, and the only reason the building is bigger is because you've taken away spaces to get more units and obviously to make more money, which is your job, you know? But our job is to make sure it kind of works for the tenants as well as, and there's no street parking, there's no option of that either, so. So I just, I just feel like I need more information and data that would support that and-
We're happy to provide it, I just, one clarification, there were no parking spaces lost. There were 32 before and there's still 32 now, so just-
But you just added a lot more apartment units, so am I-
More units, five beds. Yes, yeah, but we didn't lose, I, I thought I heard you say that we lost parking spaces and I just wanted to clarify that.
I guess I misspoke, yeah, but, I mean, you just need more and the, and the reason your building is bigger because you're not providing that parking, and so, you know, and my other question is, is there more space for more parking on there somehow?
Yeah. To address, you know, the 28 cars next door, usually on weekends, you know, there's a boyfriend or something that'll visit, just on a weekend type thing, but you can drive by there most anytime during the day or, you know, workday-
Morning.
Mornings, early in the morning or, and you'll see, there's, there's open spaces. You can look at other places.
So that's use, I mean, you have people coming over, that's use, and so.
So, you know, having somewhat of a parking management write-up is probably good due diligence to front-load that. I know up till now, you haven't, like, assigned spots or, but, you know, is there a way you could have it in your lease that you tell them, like, you're only allowed one car, like, you know, make it very specific?
Yeah, well, that's-
And if they were to ask and say, oh, we have two cars, maybe you have a couple of solutions that they, you know, there are people who rent their spaces or lots and-
That's kind of the way I was looking at it, figuring one car per unit, you know, for studio one bedrooms and even a two bedroom, maybe two for the three bedroom, so there you're looking at 24 spaces for residents.
So if that was written down-
We'll put something together.
That would be helpful.
We'll provide additional information justifying the request for the waiver and- We'll provide additional information justifying the request for the waiver, and then we'll also, part of that probably will be some parking management plan, like John's talking about.
That'd be good, it'd be a little more clear. I mean, I personally would hate to see more, any of the green space go to more asphalt. Like, you know, it's finding that balance. Jack?
Did we, or did you discuss having a, a walkway between, is it Spruce?
Spruce Ridge.
Yes, Spruce Ridge. And this, I, it seems like we talked about that a bit.
Well, there's kind of a cow path walkway there, because, you know...
That's right, yeah.
But I think, I actually thought about putting a sidewalk or something there, and I was discouraged by a couple of people, insurance agent, number one, as far as the liability, you know, as far as people falling and stuff like that. I mean, now, they find their way over to the bus stop. I think I mentioned in the last hearing that when I was working at the property there one day, one of my tenants from next door went to get the bus right in front. And then he's walking back, and I said, what happened? He says the bus was full. So, I mean, that bus, Route 30, starts at Belcher Town, old Belcher Town Road by the old landfill, stops at Rolling Green, you know, Colonial Village, a whole bunch of other apartments, and it gets filled up. So I think part of the solution is to have PBTA, either add a bus, or put the stretch buses in there or something, because he had to go back, and he hopped on his skateboard, if you remember, and skateboarded up the street. Now, University Drive complex is one point three miles from Whitmore, this is one point two miles. And it's more of a direct, you know, route right up Triangle Street. So just a point of information on that, you know. And a lot of, a lot of people do walk, if it's a nice day, a little exercise. Nine minutes to walk from there to the bus, the bike rack up here in the center of town. Twenty-minute walk to St. Whitmore.
Thank you. Chris?
I just wanted to note if there were thoughts about using the VFW across the street. It gets a little complicated, because then you need to get a permit for the VFW property to use their property for overflow parking, so just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Michael?
And there would be some danger in crossing Main Street at, at rush hour to get to the VFW parking lot. I don't think that's a good solution. I just want to, I'd just like to point out that, and this is not really directed at your proposal, but for the board. We've spent a great deal of time in the last year talking about parking at various developments. And it all relates, seems to me to relate to the fact that the zoning bylaw calls for two spaces per unit, which every developer that has come to us has claimed to be inappropriate, too onerous, too many parking spaces for the current market. And that may well be true, and I, I don't dispute that necessarily. But I do think it means that we, as the planning board, and perhaps as the zoning subcommittee of the planning board, really need to investigate that number, whether two parking spaces per unit is an appropriate zoning bylaw at this point. And in order to get to a decision about that, it seems to me we ought to have some kind of study, not simply one that relies on what's going on in Boston or other places, because, as I've said before, Amherst is not Boston, Amherst is not an urban area. It is its own very particular kind of world. And we need a study to, to help us determine what exactly the needs of parking for new apartment developments is. And I think we need to charge the zoning subcommittee with investigating that, and developing a way to get a good study, which gives us information about Amherst, not about some other place, but about this place, and then craft a bylaw that relates to that.
I just want to assure you that it is on the list. It is on our shortlist, top, top ten of things that need to be looked at and changed with the bylaw. We have some other stuff we got to do first, but it's on the list. Regarding a study, we do want it tailored to Amherst, but usually, doing those studies, you go and look at best practices, and you do go look at other towns that are similar, and what the recent trends are. And I think as that bylaw gets rewritten, that's what will happen. We'll be looking at best practices, and, you know, consultants are writing articles about this all the time. And no, we're not Boston, but there are comparable towns that we can use. So we will follow up. I hope, you know, maybe less than six months, we've got a lot on our plate, but it is on the top of the list, I can assure you that. And it is a personal interest of mine, parking, everybody knows me and parking, so...
So, I wonder if I can make a comment. So, just to depress the world further, parking, the use of buses in metropolitan areas, except for Seattle, is down. Car, the sale, car sales are up. Boston is mired in traffic, people are driving more, not less. But, you know, we've been doing a lot of master plan stuff, and I've been reading a lot of plans, and the transportation plan says, directs us to study the actual parking supply and its use versus the occupied floor space. So the transportation plan from five years ago is telling us to look at this, and then it says to amend the zoning bylaws to reflect actual utilization, not untailored guidance, which I don't know what that means. But I think we have to, we have to apply the bylaw that we have here. And if we keep on deciding that it doesn't really apply, we shouldn't do it, we're actually taking over the town council's role of amending the bylaw. And so we have to follow the bylaw that's written here. We, I would like some actual use of comparable properties, and, you know, during the day, a lot of parking lots are empty. If, if it's a low-income area, if it's a low-income project, there's a lot, lot less parking, because people can't afford cars. The people living in here will be able to afford cars, and they may not be going to UMass, they might be going to work. And then they're most likely to drive.
Chris?
I just wanted to mention that the planning board has a lot on its plate, and one of the things that I hope the planning board is going to be looking at over the next year is redoing large sections, if not all of the zoning bylaw. And if we do tackle that project, we're hoping that we can get some consultants to help us on certain pieces of the bylaw. And the parking section is one of the pieces that we feel that we really need some consultants' help on, to give us guidance about what do other communities do, and what is the best practice and standard throughout the country. So we, we are intending to study that, and it may take a while, but we're hoping to get there.
Great, so we have a list of to-dos. Chris, is that pretty much comprehensive then? You'd think that we would have everything on the 5th, so we can make a decision.
Do you want any public comment you're going to hear tonight?
Yep. So, Chris, are, you don't, that, okay, we don't need, like, fire or anything like that to look at the parking lot, or?
You might want to just flip through your development application report. Where is mine?
Yes, Janet?
I have a quick question from the development application report on page four. It says there are four new twelve-foot-tall post lamps proposed to light the parking lot that turn off at 1:00 a.m., and this might be the same as the previous proposal. But I just, I thought that 1:00 a.m. was really late to have a light burn, like, four lights burning, and I wondered why that time was picked, and, and earlier time might be, I just, I just wondered.
When I think of people are out and about at night, they're usually home by 1:00 a.m. And after 1:00 a.m., we have the Ballard, or Ballard lights, you know, along the sidewalks, and the entry lights. I think there's still plenty of room, so I guess if you're asking if they can go off early, or I don't see why not.
Though, it is, there is a point where restaurants and bars, you know, are open till 1:00, and there's a liability issue. I think the thought that they go off is good, because a lot of parking lots, they just leave them on till the sun rises. But, yeah, what do you have in your other apartment building?
Yeah, those are actually on all night.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so discussing.
But that can change.
So, yeah. Chris?
So I noticed that, I, I went back and looked at the site management plan for the previous application, and it is different from what we would expect for this application. The number of units is sixteen, and now we're looking at twenty-four. And there may be some other things having to do with exterior lighting. So I would recommend that the applicant and his lawyer go back and look at the management plan that they submitted last time, and update it so it's in conformance with this plan, so that when the planning board says this property's going to be managed according to the management plan, that we have the right management plan.
Is that clear?
Yeah, we've got an updated one.
Great.
But yes, clear.
Okay. And, Michael?
Yes, continuing on the question of lighting on page four, the sign plan, it suggests that the lights, the ground-based, ground-mounted, shine up onto the surface of the sign. That strikes me as not being dark-skY compliant. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's, it's...
Yeah, I mean, I think...
It's the same grandfathered lights is what I remember before.
It's the same lights focused on the sign.
But if you were to change it, and that is a point, that if you change the electrical system, change the lights out, you might want to go with down.
Goose, gooseneck, something like that.
And we'd have to change the...
Lights mounted on the top of the sign itself.
Right, that's what you're saying.
Yeah, well, if we did that, we'd have to change the sign design, because right now, it's like, you know, the sign is mounted between two posts, so we'd have to have some kind of a bar or something, and shine down.
I think you probably could mount them on posts, which come up from the existing posts, as opposed to on the top of the sign itself.
Yeah. Well, the way these are now, with the planting bed around there, with the stone planting bed, the lights are down below the top of the stone, so it's just the light itself that's shining up. You don't see the actual fixture.
Which is, I think he's concerned about light bleed up into the night sky, as opposed to focus on the sign itself.
The new lights that we insisted they're down, face downward and not up. But from what I remember before, you weren't changing the light, you were going to use the same lights. But if you were to, I mean, so you're being asked, is it an option to change that system to downward lighting?
You can certainly look at that.
We'll look at it.
Come up with something.
Okay, great. Light, sign lighting, great. All right, so I think we have our list. Any last questions? I was going to open it up to public comment. Okay, I don't see any. Is there anyone here who has any questions on this project, or is here for it? I, I see one, so if one of you gentlemen could let Ms. Pam sit and ask her questions. Welcome, we know who you are, but if you could tell...
Dorothy Pam, 229 Amity Street. Just one quick question. Is it possible not to have the parking in front of the building, the, the spot three, right near the sign? So, because I think if they work really hard to make a nice building, and then you're all working on that with them tonight, it would be nice not to have the cars in front.
They addressed this a little bit earlier, but they can talk about it again. It has to do with the electric charging station being near the transformer, and those three spots, of course, they're going to be compact spots, any compact car could park there, but the hopes is that they will be electric. And is that correct, that it was suggested, instead of running it all the way to the back lot? Okay, perfect, so, thanks. Any other public comments? I see none, so at that point, we could continue this to February 5th. We could say a time. Chris, I don't know what we have on for that day, can we see?
So far, you don't have anything, you could continue this to seven oh five on February 5th.
Seven oh five, okay. Do I hear a motion to...
So moved.
Close the public hearing and move it to February 5th?
Just continue.
Oh, continue, sorry. Continue the hearing, thank you. I'm thinking close, move. Yeah, no, but continue it, continue it until February 5th at seven oh five. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Chris, that's all good? Okay, all in favor and unanimous? Great, thank you, and we'll see you on the 5th.
Great.
Okay, so, um... Anyone else want a break, or should we continue? Okay, just want to check, you're all good. All right, so we'll move to item four. It's a public meeting subdivision, Amherst Hills subdivision, sub 1989-13. Continue discussion on request by residents of Amherst Hills subdivision that the planning board rescind the release of lots that were, that were released by the planning board on May 1st, 2019, from the approval with covenant contract dated July 2nd, 2003, recorded in the Hampshire County Registry of Deeds, Book 7555, page 61. So I'll wait for everyone to get settled, a lot of people taking their seats. Chris, do you want to do an update first, and then invite people up?
Happy to do an update. So since the last meeting, which was December 18th, we've done some investigation, and I think we've made some progress. First of all, the planning board asked me to reach out to Michael Pill, who represents Tofino Associates, to ask him to put in writing, in a letter with, on letterhead from his office, the offer or information that he sent to the planning board last time in the form of an email. And that was that, the planning board asked that Mr. Pill outlined Tofino's plan for finishing the road and giving the board a date by which the work on the roadway will be completed. The planning board requested that this date be sometime in the summer of 2020, and something like July 1st, and not by the end of the construction season. And also, the board asked me to reach out to find out if Mr. Pill would, on behalf of his client, would be interested in signing a new, either a new three-party agreement, or submitting a bond for the difference between the amount that was in the three-party agreement and the amount that it was actually going to cost to complete the road. So, subsequent to that, Mr. Pill wrote back, and I think everybody has a copy of that letter, the planning board has copies, Mr. Reedy has copies, and probably anybody who wanted a copy could get one from the back table. And essentially, he did just, he did reiterate on his letterhead what he had put in his email, that the, the Tofino Associates has every intention of finishing the road, that they would finish it by the end of the construction season of 2020. And then he made a suggestion at the end of his letter, which caught the attention of our attorney, Joel Bard. So the suggestion at the end of Mr. Pill's letter, which I really paid attention to in the last few days, is that not to have a new three-party agreement, but to issue a new covenant. And the new covenant would cover the nine lots that were released last spring but haven't yet been sold, the nine lots that are currently under a request by the planning board to the building commissioner not to issue building permits. So I discussed that with our town council today, and our town attorney today, and he thought that was a very good idea, to reimpose the covenant for those nine lots. It would be, it would have the same effect as rescinding the release, but it would be a cleaner way to do it. And he is ready to draft up a new covenant, and that would be brought back to the planning board for signature. And at that time, if that new covenant were recorded at the registry of deeds, we would request that the original letter that I had sent requesting that the building commissioner not release building permits, that that be rescinded. So Joel Bard thinks that is the best way to go in this situation. I did talk to him about... I did talk to him about the possibility of our department imposing fines on, on the developer if he didn't do what he said he was going to do. Joel Bard dissuaded me from that action. He thought it would not necessarily be appropriate in this case. He said that type of action is best used for sort of repetitive cases, like people who don't follow the, don't follow building code, don't follow zoning code, something that is easy to explain to the court and easy to get them to agree, yes, you can impose $100 fine 30 days in a row, and yes, you can try to get your $3,000 from the person who's not doing the right thing. In this case, it is a very complicated situation, and it would be hard to explain it to the court. I could do it, but Joel Bard didn't feel it would be really worth the effort, and he didn't feel that the court would understand what we were trying to get. So, he recommends that we follow the procedure of reimposing the covenant for those nine lots, and I believe I could probably bring back that document to you for next time, for you to sign. So that's the recommendation that we have for you.
Could you explain, so you can just issue a new covenant?
The developer is offering to do this. The developer is essentially agreeing to do this. You can agree to do it as well, and then it would be the same as if those lots had not been released, but it wouldn't be the same as rescission of the release.
So you said it could be drafted, it would come back to us for January 29th or the 5th?
One of those dates. It depends on how long it takes Joel to draft it, then he'll send it to Michael Pill for his review, and then it'll come back. So it'll probably take a little back and forth to get it right, but it seems like the right path to follow.
That seems pretty reasonable to me. How does, do we want to take that path for now and, and get a draft and have it come to us next time, and we can all do a little research on this concept? And, Janet?
So, we draft the, we, if we approve the covenant, do we file it at the registry of deeds, or does the developer have to do that?
Either one. I asked Joel that question, and he said either one can file it at the registry.
Well, that sounds reasonable. David?
Um, so, prior to May 1, 2019, there was a three-way party agreement related to this property, the subdivision, which provided financial, some sort of financial security for the completion of the roads, such that they could then be handed over to the town. And in addition, there was a restriction on the release of these lots. Is that, am I correct in that? So there were two, there were two pieces of security encumbering the developer. Correct? Whereas, the proposal would be to remove one of those pieces of security, that is the three-way party agreement, and restore the restriction on the release of the lots until, until performance has been made. Is that a fair summary?
There's still a performance bond of $288,000. That doesn't go away.
I think Mr. Pill is recommending that that go away, and Joel Bard is agreeing that that can be done. The nine lots are worth a lot of money. You know, I don't know exactly what they're being sold for these days, but if the estimate to finish the road is $930,000, nine lots are worth more than $930,000, and the town holds the ability to, to get the money out of those lots with the covenant.
I'm glad you asked that. So we do a new covenant, but the performance, the existing bond goes away.
Why?
That would go away.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to ask.
If I could add to that, so I think this idea of the covenants makes sense. I'd keep the bond, you know, extra insurance. And when the sentence in this letter, "Tofino hereby elects to terminate the existing agreement", that's just not the way things work. We have a written contract that's enforceable, and you just can't say, "I'm taking my toys home." You know, so I would recommend just letting that sit, keeping the bond, and then doing the covenant. I don't understand, I don't understand that sentence.
I agree. Like, I read what they wrote, but when Ms. Bestrop was explaining it, I assumed you were only talking about the covenant part. Yeah, so I guess you, could you write back?
So I'll have to go back to Joel Bard and ask him about that.
Right.
And then, ma'am, I have another question.
Yeah.
I don't, I guess effectively, there's no difference. But to restore the covenant restricting the release of the lots versus the planning board rescinding its decision to release the lots, it seems like really kind of parse... No, actually, I can see differences there.
I see.
Okay.
But that... That's what, that's what Mr. Bard was proposing, was to, and that's what Mr. Pill is proposing, is that it's restoring the covenant, it's not acting on, the covenant to restrict, it's not acting on the prior planning board decision.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, David, maybe you could explain this. Is that, is that a difference without a distinction? I don't understand why it's different.
It seems a little more protective of the planning board and the town, and that's, I think, an interest that I think we have.
Thank you.
I also remember Mr. Bard saying that he couldn't find a case of a Commonwealth planning board rescinding lots, so it was sort of a fuzzy, unknown area to even, yeah, unknown. Mm-hmm. Okay, so that sounds good. I still, also, if you're asking them, you know, they say end of the construction season. I'd rather have a hard date, whether it be like October 31st, you know, construction or when the asphalt plants close, like, because that's hard to read. It just takes an early snowstorm, and all of a sudden, you're like, oh, out of time.
Anything else that we want Chris to either ask the, either of the lawyers or look into? I don't see anything. So I was going to open it to public comment. Oh, so, before the public comment, do you have anything you...
I'll never turn down an opportunity.
And this is Mr. Reedy, not, not Tom, the...
That's right, not the clicker.
The clicker.
That's right. Good evening, for the record, Tom Reedy, attorney with Bacon Wilson, here in Amherst here on behalf of the residents of Amherst Hills. I think the recommendation made tonight by, you know, I think ultimately the full board, from what I'm hearing, but I think what Ms. McGowan said was pretty on point, especially, I think it's, if you haven't read the letter yet, I think you have to read the letter and understand the tone of the letter, and understand what Tofino just consistently is looking to do. And it's, I think it's just trying to skate some responsibility. So our suggestion would be to increase the security, and if that's by way of covenant and keeping the performance bond, you know, that tri-party agreement, we think that both of those things together serves to protect the residents, so the town has some collateral should Tofino not complete the roadway. So, but we just suggest you look at the tone, because this is our what number meeting, and they still haven't showed up, and I, you know, I think you just have to read it carefully. But, yeah, we're supportive of the recommendation.
I do believe you had a court date, which is the suggestion of arbitration. I was wondering if that had started, or if there was any movement.
Yeah, it has started, and so there have been some, there's been a motion hearing in land court last week, where again, the representation was made by Tofino's counsel that they would complete the roadway. They also are to get the court a definitive number with quotes for how much it's going to cost to reconstruct and complete. I believe that date is January 21st, that we're going to get that feedback back. And so we think, you know, with that track moving along, and then with this track by the planning board, ultimately, I think you'll hear, if you hear from the neighbors, they just want to make sure that these roads are going to get done. I mean, that's reconstructed and then completed. So, you know, ultimately, we think the covenant and bond is the way to go.
Okay.
That's it.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Reedy? Okay, I think they're, we're all good. So I am going to open it up to public comment, and I want everyone who feels they need to be heard to come up. I just ask, like, as Mr. Reedy said, we've seen all of you a lot of times, and we, we hear you, and I hope you see that we are continuing to work on this, and we are very sincere about it. So if you want to come forward, but again, you know, if you've heard someone else sort of say what you've said, we hear it, so, and it looks like you get to come again in a few weeks. So, at this time, I'll ask for a show of hands, who would like to come up and speak tonight? Raise your hands. I see, I see two, three, and I'll ask again after we have that, but, and you're on the fence, you're not, okay. So we've got three and a half with Mr. Master Alexis, so, so the first three, I'll start on the left-hand side. Oh.
Just have a moment here.
Um...
Someone else.
Yeah, if you two want to talk, I'll go to the other two, but I'm, I'm not going to hold up the meeting for, yeah, okay. So I saw this gentleman, I think there's another man in blue behind, oh, he's going out too. All right, so, sir, you're the only one I see right now with your hand up. Please come forward.
Thank you, and I have been here before, so I...
You have.
...repeat anything that I said before.
But please repeat your name for the minute takers, and...
My name is Brian Scully. I live on 22 Hawthorne Road in Amherst.
Is your mic light on? I just want to make sure. And if it is green, try to talk into the mic.
Okay. First off, I've, we've always come a little earlier in the thing, so tonight was the first time I had a chance to actually see what you guys do. And it's the first time I've heard a developer talk, and honestly, it's a really impressive thing. I mean, those guys, they're clearly good, honest developers. They're telling you the things they want to change in the deals and everything else, and you guys are thinking them through and asking good questions, and then double-checking everything to make sure it's all kosher, you know? I mean, it, it's very impressive. And again, I'd never seen it before, so that isn't what I came up to talk about.
But thank you.
No, but it's really something. I don't know, I don't watch the TV thing, you know, the, you know, the local TV, you know.
I wouldn't watch it either.
But the thing I wanted to ask tonight, because before, I think I've asked you guys to try to put yourself in our shoes, and I think you have. I think you've given us a pretty fair hearing, and you've done some good stopgap things to help us. But tonight, I'd like to ask you to put yourself in Tofino's shoes, and base, try to figure out what their intentions are from their actions. And I say that because everything they say is different than what they are going to do or what they have done. We were approaching them in the summer of last year to try to get those potholes filled, because they were dangerous. I mean, never mind cars could get damaged or anything, but kids were driving their bikes around, or kids, or cars were coming at the same time as a kid, and they're swinging into the other lane, because they don't want to damage their car. So it was a serious thing. And they said, "Don't worry, we're going to take care of it. Ted Parker had a heart operation in April, but we're on it this summer, don't worry." And then we finally called them in to talk to us in person in September, and it was like, "Oh yeah, don't worry, we're going to take care of it. We're going to have it all squared away, don't worry, no, no problem. I'm going to see Ted, Jason Skeels in two weeks, he's going to tell me what he needs, and boom, it's going to be done." Well, nothing. And then we came here to complain to you guys and let you know what's going on, and you decide you're going to go out. Two days or one day before you came out, that's when they did it, okay? So their feet were to the fire. But here's the thing, if they're going to do what they say in that letter, they're going to take care of everything, they're going to, you know, figure out the cost, they're going to pay for it, they're going to do the whole thing, why aren't they here telling you that? If it was me, I'd be crowing to everybody, saying, "I am so unfairly accused here. I'm just a businessman who's trying to do my best." That's not what they're doing. They're sending letters instead of coming here and telling you, and they're saying things like, you know, "Rechange this covenant," I guess that means a contract or whatever. But if they're saying, "Don't worry, we're footing the bill on this," why wouldn't they increase the bond? If it costs less than what Jason Skeels thought it would, they won't spend it. The money's not going to be gone, they'll get to keep it. I mean, why is that? Why are they, it sounds like trying to get the bond to disappear in lieu of these lots. And I don't have quite a high opinion of the value of the lots, to be honest with you, because the roads are going to be in such terrible shape, who's going to want to buy a house or build a house when they know they're going to have a $20,000 or $30,000 share of having to build the road so Amherst can take them? So I don't think they're doing us any favors here. And I do wonder, the bonds seem like such a good idea, and you guys negotiated in the beginning when it all made sense and the prices were less and everything, but everything has changed. Why aren't they willing to change the bond? It's not money out of their pocket if they don't spend it. It's just a protection for us, and I guess for the town, that we don't have to reach into our pockets and do it. I'm not selling my house. I'm, I'm here, I'm here for life. But there are people who want to, and they can't, just for that reason. And those lots, yeah, they're pretty. Some of them are really nice, some of them aren't. Some of them are kind of wooded, and some are going to have trouble with the Conservation Commission. So I don't know if they're worth as much as everybody says, but just go by what they're doing and saying, as opposed to what they're promising. And I don't see anything coming through. If that guy sat here right now and said, "Yeah, I'm going to pick up the tab, we're going to raise the bond, we're going to do this," you'd have 100 people applauding him. Why isn't he? Why aren't they taking credit for doing the decent, right thing? I don't think they're gonna. And I think this guy Pill is a really smart lawyer, and is way smarter than me, because I didn't see, thank God, you saw the thing about the, the bond disappearing, or whoever saw that. Jesus, that's scary. I mean, that's the only thing you're really got. That's worth 300 grand, you know? God knows what those other things are. So I'm just asking you, ask yourself, why, what are they really doing here? You know? Because you've identified with us really well. I think you understand what it's like to be us, but if you're looking at them, I swear to God, I'd be, I'd be running for mayor, because I'd be telling everybody how great I am, because I'm making my, I'm keeping my deal, I made a lot of money, and I, everybody's off the hook. They're not doing that. Thank you, and I'm sorry I talked so long.
Thank you. So I'm going to ask again, after there's been conversations, how many people would like to come forward and talk? If I can see a show of hands. I see three hands. So I'll go from the left, and there's two and three. Welcome, just remember to state your name and address.
Hi, Blake Spearco, 53, Concord Way. I'm just, again, going to ask, because it seems like we keep doing this, is ask that we increase the bond. I am concerned that five of those lots have vernal pools, there's meetings on the Conservation Commission, and they are not going to be worth nearly that much money, security. I think the, you know, the Tofino knows this, that those are not going to be worth that much money, and that, and we are going to be then stuck where we were, been talking about not having to increase bond, because they won't be able to use, they're going to be of little value. Thank you. And the other thing is, there's other things beyond doing the road on that checklist that's worth, as we know, lots of money, and that's what Hopbrook and Kestrel, they have both code. The road is done, but they still haven't been able to finish, get it, submit it to the town. There's, you know, all these other things like that are on that punch list that the town manager gave us. Thank you.
Thank you. The second gentleman in the blue in the back.
Hello, good evening, I'm Attorney Andrew Glass, ever appreciate...
Please, sir, sit down and then speak into the mic, because there's people at home who watch this.
I think first of all, the, the lots that you're discussing as holding security that Tofino owns, those are practically unsellable, so therefore, they would not constitute sufficient security for the Tofino obligations to finish this road. As has been mentioned, there's some vernal pools and various issues, but more importantly, last week, through the land court action, Tofino encumbered everyone's lots by filing their litigation. So last week, Tofino asked the land court to grant notice of list pendants, so no one can sell their properties anyway right now in the subdivision. So I think on that front alone, there should be an increase in the performance bond for Tofino to finish their obligations here. And if you read this, this letter from Michael Pill, I believe that in itself is very troubling, where he's saying that he, Tofino will finish the road, finish constructing the road, but he's going to leave it up to the land court to stick it to all the homeowners and hold them responsible for whatever fees they decide to incur in finishing the road. So ultimately, they're saying, "Yeah, we're going to finish the road, and then we're going to backcharge everyone that owns a home in the subdivision." You know, it's just not right, that's not what the agreement said, that's not what Tofino agreed to with the town. By, by developing this subdivision, they agreed to construct all of the ways and to finish those ways. That includes the infrastructure, base coats, drainage systems, everything. So unfortunately, I think Tofino is in a position right now where they're going to have to put up more security, and that's not going to come in the form of these lots, it needs to come in the form of money. So that's, that's really all I had to say tonight.
Welcome, if you can introduce yourself.
Yes, thank you. Alexandra Mayu, 73 Linden Ridge Road. Happy New Year, good to see you again. So, so I would like to urge you, like you heard previously from a few of us here, to first check what these lots are worth before proceeding with this particular suggestion, because we do think that there's something fishy here. But the other thing, separate topic that I want to bring up is, is mostly request for some clarifications. So when we are saying we expect the roads to be done by some certain date, does that include the top code? Does that include the town engineer verifying that this has been done up to the town standards? Is this the time that the town, the board, you would, or whoever is responsible for this, decide whether the roads will be adopted by the town? The reason I'm asking for these clarifications is because construction is not quite finished in our neighborhood, there are some lots that haven't been constructed, and, you know, what is going to happen if roads get destroyed later on by construction trucks and so on and so forth? So I would like to understand exactly what we're agreeing to here. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, so just, you know, there's a good point in there that, you know, finishing construction is one thing, and then there's the whole process of the town accepting a road, they're two separate things. Yeah.
So the town council will have to accept the road? Town council goes out and does what they call laying out the road, that's what the select board used to do? They do that on the advice of the town engineer. The town engineer will inspect the road as it's being constructed, and if it's not constructed in accordance with the town standards, then the town engineer will recommend that the road not be accepted by the town.
Right, and part of the cost estimate, the, the listing of the actual items that the town engineer did, those, you know, that was done with Tofino, so that's sort of like the agreed things that are expected to be done. It's not the final list, but that's sort of how everyone was trying to stay on the same page, but it doesn't happen all at the same time. Does anyone have any other questions or comments this time? I see, I saw Jack first, and then, Michael?
Sorry, Mike. How, what provisions would there be in terms of monitoring the repair of the area? Is, is town engineer going to be called upon to approve the, the sections, and is that clear in the, in the understanding of the, of the paperwork that we're trying to communicate?
I'm not party to the communications between the town engineer and the contractor, but I know the town engineer goes out and inspects these roads when they're being constructed, so if he knows that the road is being constructed, he'll go out and look at it, if he hasn't seen it, then he's not going to approve it, he needs to inspect the material as it's being put down. So is that an answer to your question?
I'm just wondering if it, if it should be, you know, included in writing to some extent that they, that will be done, and...
That they have to inform the town engineer their schedule of construction, and if there's a change, they need to tell him so that he can be out there when they're reconstructing and lay in the final coat. He would have done this at, over in the Kestrel neighborhood, he, he's worked with Tofino and that standard business, but like I said, the accepting of the road is a different animal. Any other, oh, so, Michael, and then Maria.
This goes to the question of the adequacy of a covenant. Several, two of the folks who testified tonight referred to the presence of vernal pools in some or all of the existing nine lots that we're talking about. I'd like some more information from somebody about how many vernal pools are involved in how many lots, and whether or not those pools make the lots essentially unbuildable and useless for, for development. If anybody has any information about that, I would be anxious to hear it.
Chris, maybe if, if there are, maybe we should have Jason Skiles come to that next meeting so that he can be available to answer questions like that. It's the drainage swales, he had sort of talked about how there's a lot of growth and they need to be cleaned out, I don't think they directly impact houses. Do you, do you want to hear?
If I may, you may want to check with the conservation agent, just because I think we're talking about, detention basins are one thing, but vernal pools are something totally different that can prevent development of the lot, and so I think what we're hearing is that if those lots are undevelopable or minimally developable, the security isn't what we're being led to believe. So I think Erin Jakes is the, the woman who's the conservation agent, maybe we have a conversation.
And my point is that that's not really what's in play here with us, like, the vernal pools and, I do want to hear about value of lots, but we're not going to get into the problems of the lots and why some are more valuable than others. I think we just want to focus on the covenant and then hear about the value of the lots, and we want to look at the performance bond, but not get into existing problems with lots.
I respectfully disagree, it seems to me that the, that the covenant is simply a way of assuring that sufficient income, revenue exists to provide the town with the wherewithal to finish the roadways. And if the lots are in fact not worth, are not buildable, then that significantly affects their value, and we should know that before we get into the question of, of using a covenant in lieu of a performance bond.
I think if a lot is truly not buildable, it will have a very diminished value, and that's one of the things we're asking, like, so I am saying, let's ask what the value of the lots are. If they are not buildable, then they won't be worth very much. But I don't really want to get into the details of the, why one lot is more valuable and this one's not, I, I just want to know more of a total of those nine lots and an estimate of what they're valued at. Because we're just looking at coverage of money, there's a performance bond that exists, we're still in conflict where they've suggested to drop that, we're saying we want to keep that, we have various cost estimates, and I also did, I don't know, Chris, I did ask for the town engineer to update his list, his, yeah.
He was on vacation for two weeks, and then he came back with the flu, so he's essentially been out for three weeks, and this is the first week he's been back, so I have asked him, but I don't know.
If you can put that on the list also. So I think at this point, Michael, just what I'm saying is, we're trying to collect the data, I, I just don't think it's really helpful if, if, if the residents start coming up and detailing about problems in different lots. I'd rather have it either funneled through the lawyer, we'll get values of the lots, and then obviously, you'll get to look at that, and you can critique it and say, "Oh, we disagree with this," or whatever.
Do you expect to get values, so when you say, "We're going to get a value," who is providing that value?
I'm not sure who to get that value from.
That's who we're going to find out, right.
Okay.
But, and that's why at this point, I don't want to start throwing numbers around and worrying about values of lots.
I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting we do that here, I, I was suggesting that we need to have that information prior to deciding whether a, a, a new covenant is appropriate.
I just was not encouraging the public here to come up and start talking about values of lots, because it's not helpful. We'd rather get it from, from other sources, and then everybody gets the information, everybody can look at it and comment on it.
Sure.
And you could, I, I see, yep, let me go here, and then if you have something else you want to come up again, yep, hold on, so Janet?
So, speaking of money, so I wonder if there's a way to, is Tofino's collecting all these estimates, finding out what estimates he's getting? So, you know, Jason Skiles had a very high number because of the way he had to do it, but if, if it's coming in at a much lower number, that'd be useful information to know if we're covered.
Well, that's, I'll get to, so one other question I did have written here is, they say in the letter, you know, that they're, and they said this in their, their previous, so it's older now, that they were seeking bids for actual work and will begin scheduling contractors. I was just wondering, are they running RFPs, you know, how are they soliciting the work? Are they just going with, through their connections, or were they going to go through the official bidding process? Because that gives you numbers, so...
I don't think they have to do anything with RFPs, I think they're just asking for bids. And I believe that they are working on getting those numbers by next, by January 21st, which is a court date, and the court has asked for those numbers.
So they are doing the bidding process, because usually, okay, so we could get numbers from that, too. And then, hold on, okay, so I see Jack, and then Maria, and I'll get back to public comment. Jack?
I'm just, was, I had a question for Chris about the process of, we haven't seen a, a new subdivision come through, you know, last few years. So, but normally, all these things would be mapped out, say, the, the natural resources and that, so I assume that was done, and then if there's vernal...
Sold.
Yeah, I mean, it, I'm just wondering if the changing conditions, that you mentioned the stormwater creating things and, and that, and...
So delineations of any kind of wetland resource areas are only good for three years, so work could have been done back, you know, a long time ago, that wouldn't be relevant anymore. I know that the applicant, or excuse me, the developer has gone to the Concom recently with some lots that he's proposing to develop or sell, and he, I don't know what the outcome of those Concom hearings were, or which lots in particular they were about, so I can find out about that information. But normally, what happens is, the subdivision is created, the roadway is built, and then individual lots, as they come up for being developed, are brought to the Conservation Commission, because it wouldn't make sense to do the whole thing at once since all of this expires in three years. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
And I just want to add on, because it was from someone had commented, that is usually why the town doesn't accept a road until it's at least over 90% built out, because it's true, continued construction just destroys parts of the road, so you don't want to have it finished too soon, and the town doesn't want to accept it till it's nearly done, which is another concept. Maria?
I read this letter multiple times, because I don't understand lawyer speak, but I, there's one part that really jumped out me, that I think someone in the public brought up, where it's nebulous, what are we exactly agreeing to, or what are they saying? So on page two, they were reiterating what they already said, which was, "Tofino intends before the end of the 2020 construction season to do the roads." But then, the very next paragraph, it says, "In addition, the, where is it, Tofino will do this additional work." Right, "In addition, apparently as a result of demands by the lot owners, the town now wants Tofino to complete additional maintenance items which will require additional time to complete." So are they now adding on, saying probably 2020, that was not including this additional request from the town, from the lot owner? So I guess I'm not clear, like, are they now saying that's not holding, because there's, it's not just about roadwork, it's a lot of other things? So that's one thing, just, I'm still not clear exactly what they're saying, and then, right, I mean, say they do all the work, and then those nine lots do get developed, and then the large trucks rip up the roads, we're right back where we started. So I'm not quite clear what we as a planning board want to really agree to. I, I guess one was the covenant, but then not lose the bond, but then, do we want to set a date, or do we want the roads to completion? I mean, there's a lot of things, I'm not sure what we're asking exactly.
So if Tofino completes the construction of the road and gets the town to accept the road, then the town is responsible for maintaining the road. So if it gets, you know, if it, if it suffers wear as a result of trucks moving over it or whatever, once the town accepts it, it's the town's road.
I just want to add, if you are going to ask Bard and Pill to communicate whether this 2020 construction season sort of promise that was listed is still holding, or are they now saying, because of this additional maintenance items, it's changed?
Chris?
So I view the additional maintenance that he's talking about as being the work that Jason Skiles described to us when we were on our site visit, he said certain portions of the road need to be milled and reconstructed, certain portions of the base course, and he gave us approximate limits of what that is. So I believe that is what Mr. Pill is referring to as additional work, because it wasn't work that Tofino initially expected to have to do.
It would, I don't know if Mr. Skiles is comfortable with this, but on his scope of work, it would be at least helpful to me, if he had another column that marked items on that is either what he considers original construction or a maintenance item.
I think he did do that, because he talked about milling certain areas, and those were specific, and I think it amounted to about $200,000, but I can go back and ask him that question.
Yeah, because there was other little, it's a big spreadsheet. Yeah, just ask him while he's going through it, because I, if he can mark what's been done, too, that was the other thing, the, because they refer to that, I don't think it's a lot of things on the list, but anyone else have questions? Okay, so I'll go back to the public, and I'll ask who would like to come up and speak. I see two people who would like to come up, it's a second time, do I see any other hands? No, and you want to speak after them?
Can I, can I request that? The, I, well, we've, we've heard, you know, you know how many times you've all have been here, and we've been here as well, that, that there be, that one resist characterizing the developer who's not present here, and what your feelings are, the course of conduct that's occurred, we've heard a lot of it, but I, I don't think it helps your argument to disparage absent parties here. Okay? For the sake of, this is going to continue, we're trying to, we're, we're trying to understand it, but it doesn't, I don't think it helps your cause to disparage parties that are not present.
Thanks. So I'm going to start to the left, and I'll, one, and then two, and, and then you, so come up, and where it's your second time, I will ask to try to keep it as brief as possible. Thanks, so I'm going to start to the left and I'll, one and then two and, and then you. So come up and where it's your second time, I will ask to try to keep it as brief as possible to new information. And you do have to state your name again.
Blake Spurco, 53 Concord Way. I just wanted to say that it'll be very difficult immediately to find the value of five of those lots because the Conservation Commission is trying to look at it now to see what's buildable. And it sounded like to me, the best I could tell is it's going to take until the spring to figure out that, how much is affected. And I'm not an expert in that. And therefore it's going to be very hard in the near term to figure out what is the value of the, five of those lots. And I just have a question, I just don't know, I don't know if we can say what the other four lots are from. Are they on the cul-de-sac that has not even the original paving?
The other four lots were purchased by Burkum and so those are out of the, out of consideration in this, whatever this is proceeding.
That's all I was.
Thank you. And again, speak into the mic and give your name again.
Thank you very much. Attorney Andrew Bass on behalf of Burkin Construction LLC, owner of various lots in this subdivision that's in question here. I think, first of all, I, I do find that very troubling that Attorney Pill and Tofino are not here tonight, actually. So despite whatever disparaging comments may be coming their way, this is a very, very important matter for all of these people. And they're not here. I mean, you know, that's just troubling in itself. Second of all, I think that there's some very significant misrepresentations being made to this board. Last week in Land Court, Attorney Pill told the judge that the cost to reconstruct the road was around $175,000. Now he's coming in here with this letter and saying that, you know, whatever the cost may be, they'll do it. We don't know what that cost is, the number's bouncing around. The, the fact of the matter is, is that when Tofino started this subdivision, they agreed to construct the road. Now, I, I believe that it's not their intention to pay for that. They're going to pay for it initially and then they're going to backcharge the homeowners for something that they were obligated to do to begin with, which is another very, very troubling thing. To, to sell these houses, they've made millions of dollars off all these people and they're coming back and they're suing these people that bought the houses from them to pay for the road that they promised the town they would complete. So these are very troubling things that need to be addressed by this board immediately. Now, secondly, as a brief anecdote to the value of those lots that the board intends on holding as security possibly, my client purchased whatever buildable lots there were. My client gave Tofino over a million dollars over the last couple of years. And there are no lots that my client wanted to buy that were left that were buildable or profitable. Now you can take that for what it's worth, but my client's been building houses in this area for over 30 years. And, you know, if he didn't want those lots, I'm sure no one else is going to want those lots for that price. So that's, that's pretty much it.
Thank you. I see, are there other people who want to speak? I see one, two, two more hands, is that what I see? Okay. Okay, so I'll go with this gentleman, then you're next and then you.
Hi, I'm Tim Farnham at 56 Linden Ridge Road. Just one very quick question, there's a cul-de-sac that, maybe this has been dealt with before, but that hasn't, doesn't have any paving down yet at all, is that part of what they're going to finish? So my question is then, in any kind of agreement that happens, if, well, I guess that's, that's for later. You're not going to be able to answer that, but that's not included in the, in the, in the finish? Okay, thanks.
Sir?
My name is Angelo Mazocco, 57 Linden Ridge Road. The last time I addressed the board, I told you guys that Ted Parker and Tofino cannot be trusted. Now, a gentleman before me said that he's going to live in the house for the rest of his life. That's not the case in my situation. I need to sell the house, excuse me, for financial and personal reasons. And this matter is jeopardizing a very important procedure. So what I would recommend, which I think would resolve many of the issues, is that the board establish a deadline when the roadwork is to be completed. I believe that it was mentioned beginning of 2021, I believe that's too late. They've had a great deal of time, they should be able to do the work by the middle of 2020. So if that can be accomplished, I personally, would personally would be very grateful. Thank you.
I'll just repeat again, Chris, that, you know, we had suggested July 1st and they came back and said, end of the construction season and I'm still pushing for like an October 31st or a firm deadline at least to get that written in a letter. Okay?
All right, good evening, members of the board. My name is James Mastrellexis, I live at 35 Linden Ridge Road. And thank you for hearing us once again this evening and to all my neighbors for hearing them as well. So there's just a couple of things that I wanted to mention. First of all, and I, I don't know the answer to this, but I want to bring this to your attention. There, there is a covenant in this matter, which I believe is 19, is 2003, I believe it is. So my question is, if a new covenant is entered into, does it replace that covenant that was in place, which said in paragraph one, the work on the ground needs to be completed before the lots are released, which led to this whole issue when we identified that to say, well, the work isn't done and the lots were released? So my question is, and you don't have to answer it tonight, I'm not saying that, but this is a little bit complicated, that there is a covenant in place and would this covenant that we are now entering into, would it replace that? So I just want to bring that to your attention so we don't unintentionally make a mistake. And I raise that because of my friend, Tim, Tim Farnham, who came earlier, who discussed, raised the undeveloped and unpaved section of the road. I believe, and I could be wrong, but I want to bring this to your attention and maybe town council's attention, I think it's a valid question. Did that previous covenant cover the, the cul-de-sac road that's not paved? Okay? That may cover the cul-de-sac road, this new one may not cover the cul-de-sac road. So that's a question that we cannot ignore, okay? I, I think, and I don't, I don't want to talk about the lawsuits, but I think the, one of the issues here with increasing security, okay? I'm comfortable that we're going to win that lawsuit. We're, we're correct on this score, okay? And if we win the lawsuit, there's always a possibility, okay? That, and we talked about this the last meeting, that Tofino just walks away. You know, we win, they lose, they leave. So that's the, one of the reasons why I think the security needs to be increased. And I hope Mr. Pill, and I hope Tofino does what he says here, that they're going to do the work and then there's not a problem. But if he doesn't and then we prevail and then we don't have to pay, I, I think there's a question and, and a risk. And we don't, when you plan these subdivisions, we try, I think, the town and your body, the body of the planning board tries to minimize these risks. So I think that's, that is a, an important point here. I also think that there's a disconnect between what your engineer, Jason Skiel, who's been out to our neighborhood many times and has done a lot of work in the town, what he's saying needs to be done and what Tofino is saying needs to be done, okay? Now, I'm not an engineer, okay? I don't know what's right, but you know, Tofino's saying it's 175,000, they made that representation in court. That's fine, if that's true and the road gets done, great. I don't want anyone to spend money that they don't have to spend. I'm not looking for a high number. I'm not looking for a high number. But there's a disconnect between what your engineer is saying and what Tofino is saying. So that has to be resolved. And I just wanted to say, Madam Chairwoman, you know, we don't look at anything here as maintenance, okay? I just, I know you use that word and I know it's been kicked around, this, this is a complicated matter, okay? We're looking at this as reconstruction, okay? We've got, you know, we're on a half-constructed road. All the people behind me are living on a half-constructed road. And through the passage of time and construction, that road has deteriorated. And in the three-party agreement, okay, on page three, that Tofino drafted themselves, it says the security in this matter shall also, shall always have a relation to the, to the total cost needed to finish the subdivision, okay? Including damage to previously constructed work, okay? So the security needs to be, have a relation to the work needed to be done in the subdivision, including previous, damage to previously constructed work. So the word maintenance here is convenient, but it's inaccurate. We're talking about reconstruction of damaged, previously constructed work. So I think when you put those things together, increased security in this matter protects all of us. We are the town, the town is behind us, the people, you know, the constitution, we the people. That's why we're all here in the first place. The people give the government the power to do, to regulate us, to govern us. And you've done, and I think my friend Brian was right this evening, you did a great job on the previous building, you know? You do good work here, okay? But we're in a situation that having to reconstruct a road is a fiction. It's just a fiction that needs to stop, okay? I'm glad members of the board picked out the tone of Mr. Pill's letter. Switching gears a little bit here, the tone of Mr. Pill's letter. He, he punches you in the nose a little bit and he says, oh, you, you put the, a moratorium on the building permits and this, in an ex parte hearing, meaning without us, alone. You've, we've invited them to every meeting and they haven't come. And they say on page two of their letter, in paragraph two, it's an ex parte hearing. No, it's not. It's not ex parte. They, in the last paragraph, I'm glad Ms. McGowan picked this out, they're saying they're going to elect to withdraw from the agreement, the three-party agreement that has the town of Amherst and Greenfield Savings Bank. Yet they say they can withdraw. No, they can't, in my view, okay? And you shouldn't let them because in the three-party agreement, you know who can enforce that three-party agreement? It says right in there in the last two paragraphs, the planning board. If you, and I'm not saying this, I'm not saying you should do this, but if you wanted to tonight, you could vote to call in that bond of $288,000. You could vote to do that because it says the planning board can enforce this. And I'm not suggesting you do that because this, but because this is a complicated matter. And when we, not me, when your, and your town council draft this covenant, okay? I would suggest that we have some conversations before it comes back to you to say, did, you know, are there things that we need to look at like the undeveloped road, okay? Because it's a complicated matter. And I just had one other thing I wanted to say, but it just skipped out of my mind, I'm sorry. So I thank you for your concern, okay? But as you can tell from my friend Angelo, who just preceded me here, okay? To several people in our neighborhood who want to move on from the neighborhood, okay? This is a tough one. You know, we're not a construction company. We're people who, in many instances, you know, worked hard, put all the money that we had up to buy the nicest house that we could buy. And now some of our neighbors need to sell. And we can't, and I know Mr. Burkum, I've spoken to him, can't because if you buy into our neighborhood now, you're, you've become one seventieth of a construction company if you take Tofino's theory in this case. So I hope, Mr. Levinstein, I didn't say anything that was negative to anybody and I thank you for that concern. And I agree with you, we should make this decision on the facts. The facts are, the work wasn't done pursuant to the three-party agreement by June 30th, on June 30th, 2019. You can require additional security? That language was written by Tofino. And I, I think in the end, I'm not opposed to a rewritten covenant if it covers all those bases that I discussed, that we have security. So in the end, we don't come back here in three years and say, and say, Tofino's gone, but we're still here and someone's got to reconstruct that road. And it's not going to be us. Thank you very much and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So unless there's, Chris, yes?
I just wanted to say one thing. I, I think, and this may not be true, but perhaps Mr. Reedy knows, I understand that the $175,000 is not the price of finishing the road. I think the $175,000 is repairing the parts of the road that have deteriorated. So Mr. Reedy might correct me if I'm wrong.
Thank you for that. And if there's no more questions from the board, then I think we'll move on for this meeting and we'll continue this on February 5th. And I see no hands, so thank you all for coming. Ongoing process. Thanks. Okay, so I'm just going to stall for a minute here because it will be noisy. Yep. Okay, I'm going to continue now. I'm going to move to item five, it's master plan update. I asked the members if it would be all right if I can move item B in front of item A, which, so we would talk about the master plan for the planning board and then we'll get into A and C, the CRC memo regarding the process involving them and town council with the master plan update. So if we move to item B, it's, the item is vote to agree to move ahead with the master plan update. I'm going to ask Chris Bestrop to sort of update us on, on where we are with her and, and is her role in guiding us as a planning board and to, you know, repeat about how it's, it's part of our jurisdiction and, and why it's overdue and why we need to do it. And then I thought it would just be a good idea to take a vote on it, voting, some kind of motion saying that we were going to begin the process of updating the master plan. And that, the details of that, Chris will start to elaborate on and will work on over the next month.
Do you want me to start?
Yeah, please, thanks, Chris.
So there have been questions raised about the timing of this update. It's certainly true that the master plan calls for updating the master plan every five years. And it was completed in 2010. At the year 2015, we had been through, let's see, Mr. Musanti passed away and I took over as planning director from Jonathan Tucker who retired. So that was a very, shall we say tumultuous time? Then we had, how many, how many town managers? We had Mr. Zomek, we had Mr..
Heckan Blackner.
Heckan Blackner, we had Mr. Buckelman. So there was a lot of transition during that period. It didn't seem appropriate to try to update a master plan at that time. Then we started in the planning department putting suggestions about updating the master plan into our capital budget. Little increments, $50,000 here and there. That didn't get, gain any traction because there are so many other things calling on the town to spend money on. Then we had. Then we had the transition from town meeting to town council, and so that didn't seem an appropriate time to update the master plan, when we were just having the town council getting its feet under itself and establishing its own priorities and procedures. So now, here we are, 10 years after the master plan was approved, saying, "We want to update the master plan. We want to bring it into conformance with the things that we're thinking about now." We're thinking about climate change, we're thinking about resiliency of communities, we're thinking about sustainability. Those were things that we might have talked about in the time leading up to the time the master plan was adopted in 2010, but they weren't at the forefront of our minds as they are now. So the town council and the CRC and staff have talked about updating the master plan to get it to a point where the town council will feel comfortable in adopting it. The town council is required by the new charter to adopt the master plan. So there's sort of a choice to be made. Do we go full bore and redo our master plan, which would take years and would probably take a lot of money in terms of hiring consultants? Or do we update the master plan now, and then, once we have information from the 2020 census, perhaps in 2024, 2025, we start an update of a master plan process that would culminate perhaps in 2030? The charter requires that the master plan be updated or revised, I can't remember the exact word, every 20 years.
Yeah.
So we have one that was adopted in 2010, we have another one that's adopted in 2030, that follows that timeline. So at this point, we are proposing to update the master plan, to bring it into conformance with the things that everyone is talking about now. Include updates of demographic information. The population has probably changed since 2010. We're not really exactly sure, but the, the master plan that was adopted in 2010 was based on the 2000 census, because it started to be developed in 2005. So bringing it up to date now with whatever census information we have, or whatever population information, there is population information besides the census that we can use now, but talking about, how many dwelling units have we created? How much agricultural land have we preserved? How much conservation land have we conserved, purchased, put under conservation restrictions? Those are all things that we can do now to update the master plan. But to go out to, you know, a multi-year public process and, you know, involve the whole town in this process now, when certainly the town council is absorbed with continuing to set their own procedures and figure out what they're doing. Now they have four big capital projects that they're starting to grapple with. They have a budget season coming up. It's just not the right time, in my opinion, to open up the master plan for a complete redo. So updating it with what information we have currently, bringing into the master plan the things that people are really concerned about right now, that seems the right approach. So what I'm suggesting is that planning department staff take, take a stab at how to update the, the master plan and come up with a plan. I've invited you to send me your comments, if you have comments. I think I invited you a couple of meetings ago. Mr. Bert Whistle said he'd read the master plan three times, so he probably has comments that he would like to offer. But if any of you have comments about things that you feel particularly need to be addressed in this update, I certainly want to hear those. I have my own ideas, and I've started putting together a list of the things that I think need to be addressed in this update. I would be consulting with you frequently, probably every meeting. I could bring some pieces of this to you. I'm proposing to update the master plan chapter by chapter. That seems to be the right approach. Maybe we bring in people who know about a particular topic, like open space and recreation. Maybe we want to talk to LSSE, maybe we want to talk to the Conservation Commission for Economic Development, maybe we want to bring in the Economic Development Director. So, you know, each piece of it probably has someone who is very knowledgeable about that particular topic. Transportation, maybe we want to bring in people who are associated with the Transportation Advisory Committee or the DPW. So we have a lot of resources here. But I think we can do it, small U, update in-house with the planning board's cooperation and help, and I don't feel like we really need to go out and do a complete rewrite.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Michael?
Yeah. Do you, do you, Ms. Bestrop, do you find the six-month timetable suggested by the CRC to be workable, given the fact that you may want to approach this chapter by chapter, and that presumably the planning board will talk about it chapter by chapter? That's 10 chapters, that's 20 weeks. We talk about it one chapter every week. There's, there's our six months. And then it goes into the fact that it's got to go to the CRC for comments, and then to the, to the council, and then back to us. I mean, it's, there seems like about eight steps in there. I can't remember them all, because it's very convoluted. And I don't see how that could possibly happen within the timeframe that they're talking about.
Chris?
My own impression is that the six-month timetable is really an indication from the CRC about the level of update that they want done.
Priorities.
In other words, they don't want 18 months, two years, three years taken on making this update. They need to grapple with a lot of zoning amendments that are going to be coming at them. They want to have some basis on which to decide whether zoning amendments are appropriate or not. If they haven't adopted the master plan, they don't really have that basis. So I think what they want to do is get the master plan adopted as an updated version, and then they'll be able to grapple with zoning amendments. So I don't really think that the six months is workable. I think it's probably going to be more like nine months. Maybe it's going to take us a year, like you said, maybe we take one chapter a month or something like that. I don't think we can really judge that until we get into it. Some chapters are going to take a lot more work than other chapters. I think that the transportation plan that we did in 2015 did a really good job of looking at transportation issues. And I know there are things that we need to update, but I don't feel like there's a lot of work that needs to be done on that topic. In terms of land use, I think there's probably a lot that we need to do there, and that's probably going to take a long time. Economic development, well, you know, we've had an economic development director. I understand he may be moving on, but in any event, I think the town has a good grasp of economic development, and probably the planning board isn't going to do a lot of heavy lifting on that particular chapter. So different chapters will take a different amount of effort, a different amount of input from others, and I agree with you that, that six months seems like a very short time to me, but I don't think it's going to take a year or 18 months.
I agree with you. I think there's just a sincerity they're trying to stress, that if you look, if there's any bylaw changes that they have to approve, they're supposed to have the master plan approved, adopted under them. So they know that there's a lot of bylaw changes that need to happen and are going to be coming up, so I think they just really want to get the master plan updated enough that the, that the town council feels comfortable with it, and they're willing to adopt it, knowing it's not perfect, but it's a framework. And, and, Chris, we also talked about how, as we go through this process, we will realize there are a lot of areas that are very complicated, and too complicated to deal with right now. And I think we were sort of using the metaphor of like putting them in a basket on the side. And then it will be kind of good to go through this process, because it will get us very organized and identify areas that need to have a lot of attention and consultants and more public process or whatever, that will set us up for doing a full master plan update. So I think little U is, is key, that you're saying, but even looking at it realistically, if you went six months from now, it's summertime, and that would never be the time that the town council would want us to deliver a new master plan anyways. Realistically, it is the fall at the earliest, when, you know, people are around and the town council's, you know, it's fall, ready for work. So realistically, at a minimum, it probably is eight or nine months. And just to remember that the CRC memo doesn't really, besides updating them, that's after we, we've passed it and, and approved it and moved it to them. So that's sort of after we've done our part. Any, yeah, Michael, do you?
But then it has to come back to us, again.
Not necessarily, not if they adopt it. Ideally, they're, they're good with it, and they adopt it. Yes, you're right, they could ask for things to be changed, and those changes have to be come back to us. But ideally, that's why the CRC memo is important, that they're trying to find a way that their town council members are feeling updated through the entire process, and sort of coming up to speed on the, more intimately with the master plan, than it's not, we just bring it to them and say, "Hey, read it, and these are the changes." So that's what the CRC memo is trying to do.
How do you suppose the process of the CRC's being involved will go? It, it seems to me that that's complicated and problematic at the same time. What is your sense, and Ms. Bestrop's sense, of the way in which, presumably the, the master plan is, is the planning board's responsibility? How is the CRC going to keep track of what we're doing, or have input, or what, whatever their, whatever the verb is? How's that going to work?
Well, it sort of says it in, in the CRC memo.
I don't think it does. I think it's very, very, very vague, and it says that they want to have input. What does that mean?
So if, if you read the memo, they want regular updates, and they, I, they're waiting, so part of it is they're waiting for us to define how we're going to update the master plan, in what process, and this is what Ms. Bestrop is sort of starting to carve out now. It's going to be chapter by chapter. We haven't got to this, but we talked about this in the zoning subcommittee, and how it will funnel through that, and CRC will be, you know, probably send a representative and be listening, and then there'll be certain times where, like, we send them a final draft before we approve it, and that's when we ask for their comments. And then we address their comments, and hopefully, because we've gotten their feedback, there's no surprises, and we approve the master plan, and then they will vote to adopt it.
You just said something about the zoning subcommittee being?
Yeah.
Involved. Now?
Yeah.
That, that's yet another layer of involvement that wasn't referred to in the menu, in the memo.
Because it doesn't involve them. It, that's our process.
I understand, I understand.
We have to figure out.
But so what, what's going to happen is that the zoning subcommittee is going to review the, the changes that the planning department has suggested, and then bring those suggestions to the full board, and the full board is going to debate and discuss them, and then send them back? I mean, we're adding another layer here, which I hadn't anticipated.
Well, that's internal.
Given them. I understand that that's internal, but it all fits into that six months, or, which is now a year, we've decided. But whatever that timeframe is.
Right.
It extends the complication of the deliberation. And that's where I'm really concerned, that we're getting so involved in back and forth between this committee, the, the zoning subcommittee, and the CRC, that we've got way too much communication complication going on.
Well, let me just remind you how it worked with, like, town meeting. Articles were drafted in the zoning subcommittee, that's why we have it. So that's sort of the working group, and they work with staff, who does the bulk of the work. So staff brings it to zoning subcommittee, and that's sort of, you get to work out a lot of the, the kinks and do the reviews. And of course, you are welcome to join zoning subcommittee. Everyone on this board is welcome to be a part of that. So it would come there, and just like the articles, you know, getting, it's the same thing as like getting them ready for town meeting. So zoning subcommittee would like grind it through the first time, and maybe a second time, and then they would be like, "Okay, we don't see anything wrong with this. Now we're going to bring it to the planning board." And then the whole planning board looks at it and gives their comments and feedback. And the whole time, we're working with Ms. Bestrop, and she's the one who's taking the comments back and, and re-updating. So it's not like this is a new process. We're, we're just saying we're going to treat it like we've been doing all of our works before, you know? And the zoning bylaw changes, the same thing will happen. It goes through zoning subcommittee, keeps getting reviewed there, and then comes here. But just, I just want to back up for one thing. So Chris and I kind of didn't want to do this tonight. This is for another discussion, another night. We'll be here all night if we actually try to drill out how we are actually going to do this, whether it's six months or a year, or, you know, if Chris has to get a consultant, or, you know, like, that could all happen, as we drill down. You know, Chris, we had talked to the zoning subcommittee about kind of doing a draft run, taking a chapter, and she would start with one chapter, and we'll see how it goes. It will tell a lot. If we get bound up on one chapter, well, then we're like, "Okay, we're going to have to rethink this a little, or get a consultant." But we don't want to get into the weeds of that tonight. The just of this is that this is our responsibility. We are overdue on doing this. There were good reasons why. Our director is telling us that she has been directed to do it. If you read the charter, it says that the town manager and the planning board are supposed to be doing this. So I'm saying, we need to do our job and take the initiative up, and at least try. This is, and Chris Bestrop is, is ready to lead us and do the work, and we'll, it, it could be bumpy, and it could be big, and maybe it won't end up the way we, we hope, but I think we need to officially vote and say, "Yeah, we have to take this on. This is one of, this is our first priority for 2020." Because we can't even do bylaw changes until we get this master plan adopted by the town council.
Who says?
It says in the charter.
Show me where it says that in the charter. It does not say that.
It says that all bylaw changes need to be reflective of the master plan.
And we have a master plan.
It hasn't, but it has, and the master plan has to be adopted by the town council.
Not according to the state bylaw.
Not according to, but by our charter that trumps the Massachusetts law. You're right.
Oh, you mean our charter trumps the Massachusetts state law?
For that, yes, we have to follow our charter. Massachusetts does not say that you, that's why this, we didn't have it done before. You didn't have to have your select board, according to Massachusetts. But we have a charter that we have filed with the state of Massachusetts, and it says that our town council has to approve the master plan. And they have made it very clear, if you listened to their last meeting last week, that they don't want to adopt the plan currently. They just would like it a little bit more updated, so that all the members feel better about it. Some would probably adopt it right now, but they want to make sure they get the vote, and that there's been a bit of a, that due diligence. Like I said, this is our job. We are supposed to be doing this, and it's already overdue. So I feel that we need to do our job and make an attempt to update the master plan in the most expedient manner possible, so that we can get it to the town council, and they can adopt it, and we can start making zoning changes. I'm going to let Chris talk, and then you, because she chomps you.
I just wanted to say that I think that the CRC is more of a conduit between the planning board and town council. The CRC is going to be delivering messages about what it is you're working on, how you're doing, what the tone of your work is, what, some of the subjects that you're going to cover. They're not going to get into the details about the master plan. They may have suggestions, they may have recommendations, but that, it's not their job. Their job is to keep the town council informed enough about what you're doing, so when this finally comes to town council, town council will feel like, "Oh, we know what's been going on with this. I think we can vote for this." Otherwise, town council is going to be kind of, you know, off doing what they do, and you'll be doing what you do, and there won't be that line of communication. So for me, the CRC is the line of communication between the planning board and town council, and they're not going to be, you know, working on a daily basis with you. and they're not going to be, you know, working on a daily basis with you about the wording of this, that or the other thing.
Janet?
That was a lot. So I've been thinking since the zoning subcommittee meeting and I've been doing some research on how you update a master plan, which I mean, which is obviously, there's many ways. And I'd like to sort of just, I know we could talk about this for seven hours and, but I would like to uncouple some things. Is that first, I think we can all agree, I think we're all agree that we need to update the master plan and it's overdue. So that's one, that's one piece. The second question is, how will the planning board do that? And that, that I think is a whole separate discussion. I have a lot of ideas for it. I wish that the town council would uncouple, and I don't know, I don't really know what's going on with that and have enough information, their need and desire to adopt a master plan. I hope they uncouple that from zoning changes. There's a lot of very needed, urgent sort of zoning changes that we need and I think that, I don't think the charter says that they can't do any zoning changes until they adopt a master plan. Because we already have, they said it has to be in a, in conformance with the master plan and we have one legally in effect. And so I just hope like, if people, if everyone can sort of separate that out a little bit. And then I think another discussion, which is, I think what Michael's talking about is, I think it is really confusing to figure out how the planning board and the planning department can work with CRC. And if we're doing the master plan at every, you know, bits of it at every planning board meeting and this someone has to sit here and then this, and, you know, it's just, to me, it is, seems very chaotic and confusing and it seems like we're not gonna do a great job because our planning board meetings aren't, we are so packed. We, you know, we haven't gotten to things that we tried to get to, you know, months ago. The other thing I would like to uncouple is, I would like to take this task away from the zoning subcommittee, which has been focusing on zoning and hopefully has some expertise on it. And there's so many things that we need to work on. And so I think as a possible process thing is that we form a master plan standing committee, which we can do under our bylaws or our own regulations and have that committee kind of form and work with Christine and look at processes and try to figure out what's a good process and bring it back to the planning board. And so, and the good thing about having a standing committee for the master plan is it obviously doesn't have to meet every day of the week or every year, but it can do that updating process and then kind of keep monitoring and then go to the full on. And so those people will have that experience. And so I don't think this, I would like to uncouple this work of updating the plan from the zoning subcommittee. I think those are very separate things. So, so I'm just trying to, but let's, I think maybe your first instinct was right. Let's just agree that we need to update the master plan. And the timing and the processes of the various interactions are worthy of a much longer discussion. And the CRC thing and town council thing is confusing, but we're in a really confusing time. The other thing I wanted to throw in is that Rob, I'm completely forgetting his name, the housing inspector, the inspector is gonna be doing is a bylaw update himself. And so I think that the zoning subcommittee should focus on that work and the 40R and things that are coming down the pipe pretty quickly and stay, kind of stick to their mission and let's do the standing committee on the master plan and focus on that separately. So, I'm sorry, that was so long.
Chris?
So I don't think that forming a subcommittee of the planning board is a bad idea and it could be many of the same people, all three of you, who are on the zoning subcommittee. It may be a wise idea to meet at a different time to discuss the master plan. And maybe we don't want to bring master plan issues to every planning board meeting. Maybe we want to have a, one more meeting a month to talk about nothing but the master plan. But these are all things that can be worked out after you decide that you want to update the master plan.
Do any of the other members feel up for a motion for updating the master plan?
Can I ask a question that just arose from what Janet said? Did I hear you say that Rob Moore was going to do a bylaw, do a zoning bylaw rewrite?
Somebody, somebody from town hall has asked him to do that or, Chris?
So there are sort of two levels of a zoning bylaw rewrite. One level is all the things that have been nagging at inspection services, the building commissioner and the planning department over the years about things that are conflicting in the zoning bylaw. You encounter it yourself. One portion of the signed bylaw says you can waive any portion of this signed bylaw. Another portion says you have to have a special permit to do X. How do you reconcile those two things? We have this discussion every time we have an oversized sign. Those are the kinds of things that really bog down the processes in town hall. So we need to get an understanding of that. There are portions of the bylaw that are inscrutable. You can read them 10 times and get 10 different meanings out of it. And we need to clear that up so everybody understands what the bylaw says. Many of the things that Rob Moore will be dealing with are on that level. If it works out, he can also include the things that you've already worked on, like the supplementary dwelling unit, one that you came up with and presented to town meeting that was not approved at that time, but this may be the right time to approve that. So there may be things that you've already done that we can slip in. Then the zoning subcommittee is continuing to work on zoning bylaws and as those become ready, we can give those to Rob to fit in to his rewrite. There may be things that are too big to fit into the rewrite and maybe those are things like inclusionary zoning, which are pretty big and very potentially controversial. So maybe we have to pull those out. Maybe we get a consultant to help us with that. And we do have some money to get a consultant to help us with zoning bylaw. So we're gonna figure it out as we go along, but we acknowledge, at least we in town hall acknowledge that there are many really difficult aspects of our zoning bylaw that just don't work well. And taking it as a whole, instead of taking each little piece that doesn't work well and bringing it to town council, we think that it would be better to just really try to redo the whole thing and bring that to town council. So that's our current proposal. Rob Moore is planning to come to the February 19th planning board meeting and describe what his idea is. And of course, you're gonna have to buy into it or, I shouldn't say it that way. You will be invited to buy into it and then you can make your decision as to whether you do or not. And he'll be a much better explainer than I am right now. But that's kind of what's going on here.
You're a perfectly good explainer. Thank you very much.
David?
I would ask that when Mr. Moore comes in February, that he not, I mean, I bought into the idea. I want, I'd like the details. I've been hearing about this for two years. And I totally am sold on, well, you know, that there are, what I'm, technical, just inconsistencies, glitches, things that don't work operationally or administratively. But I'd like, I mean, I think that it sounds to me as if a list has, is, has been and is in the process of being created, let's get to it instead of talk about it, getting to it. I would, I would ask if at all possible. And then as second, I, it's, I would move that the planning board begin to figure out how to update the master plan in a circumscribed manner for a presentation to the town council when, when it's able to be presented. And I would again, sort of urge that we really be narrow in our, and the terms, the categories are necessary and obvious that Mandy Jo's memo has. And she seems to, they, the CRC seems to have enumerated what necessary and obvious is, and just stick with that. With the caveat, the most important thing to me, it seems to be these four capital projects which were, which need to be included in the master plan and that were only, it seems in the prior plan casually mentioned as opposed to being at the forefront, which it seems like they were, that was an oversight.
So I have sort of a hope that if we work out a good process, it could, it could go faster. And so if we figure out a good process and going chapter by chapter might be too slow if we deal out the chapters like decks of cards and each, you know, I don't know, people on this committee each take one and, you know, work with Chris and talk to the, you know, like if I'm doing transportation, I talk to the TAC, I could, you know, you know, just do the rounds. And we could do it simultaneously and not do it one by one by one. Because that might just, we might just wind up telescoping out into, you know, the next millennium. And so, so I just think, I totally support the idea of updating the master plan. I don't think anyone wants to go deep and redo the whole thing, but I think that if we have a good process and it's, you know, coherent and we run it along, I think it will have good results. And I think we'll have a better plan at the end and better understanding. But I still, you know, so I'm behind this, but I want to do it well and think about that process. And not, also, I don't want to burden the planning staff and Chris, because like your list of to-dos for 2020 was a little scary. And then I know that you're down a person too, so.
I agree. I think we all want to do it well. David, was there a motion in that? Because...
I moved that the planning board move forward to update the master plan. How we do so is yet to be determined.
Second. Discussion, questions? All in favor? And I see unanimous. Great. So now we can put that on the next agenda. I know zoning subcommittee is also talking about it, starting to work with you, Chris, and how you want to at least start our trial or whatever. Yeah?
So I understand that the CRC is proposing to bring their memo to the town council sometime soon. And I want to say it's next week, although I'm not absolutely sure of that. So I wondered if you wanted to talk about the CRC memo?
That would be the next item. I'm gonna back up from B because, and go back to A, which also involves C.
Thank you.
Which, we have vote to support process. Do we have to have a vote on that or can we just send them recommendations? I didn't know.
I think you can send them recommendations.
Or maybe Ms. Pam can have a preference there. So we have the CRC memo and we want to give some feedback. Do you, we could just give recommendations or should we vote to support the memo? I'm not sure what CRC is exactly looking for to bring to town council.
I think Mr. Zomic and Ms. Henneke did want the planning board to vote to support the process.
Okay. Along with recommendations.
Along with recommendations.
Because we could say we vote, but with these considerations. Because I think we already identified one clearly with the six months. We want to say we hear them, that they want this done in expedient manner, but we're already probably looking at eight months to a year. But they could, if they think a year is too long, then they need to come back to us and you, Ms. Bestrop, and tell you so that you can rework and determine what you would need for resources to make that happen if it does need to be that quick. Does that make sense to, okay. Janet?
I would support the spirit of the memo without agreeing to the details because I do understand Michael's concerns and I did find it very complicated at the end. And I think that the problem that everybody's grappling with is, you know, we have our master plan and we have the authority over it and we'll approve it. And then the town council wants to approve a master plan and it wants to have some control over it. And then there might be possibly different opinions on the town council or as there'll be different opinions here. And I just, I fear getting into a long back and forth and then also, what if there's just disagreement? And so, you know, we're gonna update and adopt a master plan and they could disagree with that and then adopt their own master plan. And, you know, that's not a great end, but the charter has that confusion. And so I appreciate the spirit of trying to do it quickly, not going, you know, the deepest dive. I appreciate trying to figure out how to collaborate and work together so there isn't that point. But I can't, I'm not sure I can say this is how it's gonna go when we don't even know how we're gonna go. So it seems a little premature to say we're committed to this process, but I appreciate the spirit of it.
Just to remind you, they don't approve it. We approve it.
Yeah, I know.
Right. They're just adopting it. And in the memo, that's why they, at the time, they're, it's almost like it will be a public meeting and it's formal. They get a final draft and that is when they are supposed to give all their feedback and their recommendations. And that's when they're, you know, and CRC wants to make that clear, that they're involved. They're getting updates all along, then they get a final draft, they review it and then they give their feedback and then we do whatever we, you know, do with those. And then we approve it and then it gets presented to the town council to be adopted. Yes, you're right, there could be issues that get brought up, but that's not what's supposed to happen. I mean, we're trying to go with the process that they gave their feedback earlier. And it's not after we've approved, it's kind of like, well, we've already, because like, like you all said, the Massachusetts, by Massachusetts law, when we approve the master plan, it is the master plan. And we have a charter that they can, they adopt it, but we're trying to not have it that it gets detailed and they ask for changes after we've already adopted. That's kind of like awkward. It's, it's wrong.
We'd encourage the CRC and town council members to participate in this process as we go through it and give input.
CRC does.
Yeah, so I'm just, but just, probably as any member of the public would too, just to, you know, we hear from them, we know what their concerns are, we're listening, we may not agree.
Yes.
I just wanted to suggest that the CRC memo outlines a process that we're gonna try. And if there are aspects of it that become clearly troublesome and just don't work, we'll go back to the CRC and we'll say, how can we change this to make it better? It's not like it's carved in stone and it's gonna be like this forever if it doesn't work. So this is just kind of a starting point. It's to get us started on this path, to make clear whose responsibility is whose and get going.
It's a first time.
A first time.
We're on uncharted territory here. Yes, Michael?
Why do we need to vote to support the process described in the CRC menu in the first place? Why not just simply go ahead? We've already said we're gonna go ahead, move ahead with the master plan update. Why don't we just do that? I'm not willing to support the process as described in the CRC menu, the memo. I think it's confusing and excessively complicated. I think if we just go ahead and do what we said we were gonna do a minute ago and go ahead with the master plan update without knowing exactly how that's gonna happen, but having a reasonable idea of how that's gonna happen, doesn't that solve the problem?
I, I just want to answer his question.
Why do you have to answer the question all the time, Christine? It's not, I mean...
Because I'm the chair. And I'm repeating what Mandy Jo and, and Mr. Zomic said when they came here. All I was gonna say is, Chris just said that they asked for us to vote on it. I had asked earlier, why do we have to vote on it? And she said, because they asked. Now, that doesn't mean we have to.
That's the point.
So I, that's all I wanted to just repeat what was said earlier. David?
I agree with Michael and I think Janet, I don't think that we need to, I think that we've, we've agreed to move forward in updating the master plan. That this is complicated. I do have a lot of concerns about bureaucracy creep, which is, think is, is not productive. That we, I think, again, look forward to narrow revisions for necessary and obvious. That's been outlined or suggested here. And that we, you know, proceed. And that, and that's all, that's sufficient. That's, the CRC and town council, they can do with their internal debates, but if this is our work, then this is our work and there you go.
Okay, so we have a memo here that we received from CRC that they're gonna send to town council. And I think we've been asked, do we, we don't have to vote on it, but do we agree with the process? And if we don't, what I'm asking you all is, we have to tell them at what points in this, we either need clear... this, we either need clarification or it needs to be changed. They're, they're asking us for details on how to, because we, we will go through our process, we will approve our plan, our master plan, but then it has to go to them to be adopted. So I think they're trying to, it's setting expectations. So if we have a problem with it, we need to be specific in where our problem is. Yes, David?
I propose that the planning board move forward with looking at changes to the master plan, the currently approved master plan, to update it to reflect changes involving the form of government, the transportation plan, the complete street policy, council climate action goals, updated flood mapping, and the open space and recreation plan. Since all of these necessary and obvious changes originated outside, I believe, of the planning board, according to the charter, according to the charter, section 9.8C, proposals to amend the master plan not originating in the planning board shall be submitted to the planning board for deliberation. So I require, I would ask that, Chris, Bestrop, ask the people or the parties that have been responsible for these various or could, who could help amend and update the current master plan for those necessary and obvious changes enumerated by the CRC, that they do so and submit them to us.
I don't understand.
Again, in paragraph two of the proposed process.
Paragraph two, number two.
The last paragraph on page two.
On page two.
CRC's definition of necessary and obvious includes so on and so forth, what I bulleted, changes in form of government, transportation plan, complete street policy. There are other bodies that have done these, this work, that can submit to us, I believe, with greater authority than we, than any of us have here. Because those other parties have worked on this material, that they can submit to us what, what those, what the updated master plan should look like, reflecting that work.
Well, I think we mean that the master plan would just refer to that document. Like I was the chair on the transportation plan, but we dissolved five years ago. So, but, so we don't like, I think the up, and this list of plans is not comprehensive. There's a lot of other plans and so, but it's not that they have to be written into the master plan. They just have to be just mentioned. Like if you went to the transportation chapter, it would say like, in 2015, there, no working plan.
Great. And so that's the work that can be done.
That's right.
That whoever, so Christine, you.
So that would be Christine.
The, whoever owns, has, or whoever, wherever the, the transportation plan currently lives, that that be whoever, wherever, whoever, you know, in the town hall has, has greatest authority over that submits to Chris, hey, master plan sections, such and such, such and such, we covered it in our transportation plan of 2015. Let's, let's add that note.
Okay. So I think I see what's happening. We're starting to slip into the actual details of how to get it done. And Chris does have some ideas about this where like the transportation chapter, she would call on other staff members like the DPW or Stephanie and, and using these plans that are already accepted, you know, sitting on a shelf, but are, are, are processes. And they would be in charge of writing it into the chapter. Right.
Several of these things have been incorporated by the planning board by reference already into the master plan. The planning board actually voted to accept or to bring the transportation plan into the master plan as part of the master plan because they recognize the fact that the transportation section of the master plan itself was very weak. So that's why the effort was made. We spent $50,000 on it in two years probably, creating this transportation plan. So incorporating it by reference seemed to be the right thing. So I don't think we're going to be asking anybody to update or rewrite or do anything to these various satellite plans, if you will. At this point, we're just going to be kind of enveloping them and making sure that the text of the master plan actually refers to them. So people who read the master plan knows that those exist. Otherwise, they would have to go back through planning board minutes to say, oh, the planning board referred to this on such and such a date and incorporated it by reference. So it's really just a case of enveloping them and bringing them in at this point. And then maybe in 2015, 2025, people will feel like, oh, transportation plan needs to be redone. The open space and recreation plan has to be redone, I think every five years. So these things all have a life of their own, but I think you want to say, yes, those are part of the master plan for now.
Yeah.
That's my opinion.
If I can go.
Hold on. I just want to, do you need any other information?
So, so I actually think that's not going to be a great process and lead to a really weird result because the master plan is like 100 plus pages and we have at least 600 pages of other plans. And if we can't say, oh, our master plan is 750 pages, go read it and follow it. But I do think it'd be fairly easy because, you know, having just read the transportation plan, a bunch of stuff has been done, right? And so we don't have to just say, oh, look at the transportation plan. And the transportation part of the master plan is really weak. But if we handed it to somebody who has been working on the transportation plan and said, hey, look at this section, look at your plan, can you just pull in the key stuff? And we'll have a new section that's updated. We'll refer to the longer plan, but we'll just be more current. I don't think that's a huge lift for anybody who's really experienced. If we refer to the housing production plan and the housing market plan, plus the housing section and then in the master plan, you're going to be in this like labyrinth of conflicting and unclear things. But if, having gone through those two plans, you know, a commit, a group, you could look at it and say, and talk to the housing people, like what are the key things that we have to do and what are the problems? And just, you know, pull it in, not put it in, in 200 pages, but pull it in, in concepts and updating. So I actually don't think pulling, summarizing and pulling in the key stuff is going to be that hard.
I think we get on a slippery slope though. If, like, you're right, maybe transportation or the housing one is pretty easy, but Chris has a lot of reports, like you just said, there's a lot. I think we're just trying to do an update. We're not trying.
Well, that's actually why I don't think Chris and the planning department should be harnessed with this. That's why I think we should have a committee that is coordinating that process.
But a committee doesn't write it. They don't do the work. That's.
I do the, I could do writing on that. You know, I.
I have some people who are worried about how much work it's be, and now you're saying you're willing to write it.
But you know, when I, when I talk to, when I've talked to experts about it, they say the first thing you should do is form a committee and look at your implementation, see what you've done. And then.
But that's for feedback and for comments and we're not for writing it. Like town committees don't write, like, okay, we're getting into the weeds again about how to do it. And everybody has a different idea and a different amount of work they're willing to take on. And Chris will come to us at the next meeting with more detail. We can, we'll be here all night if we try to figure out this plan. I'm back on the CRC memo and I am looking for feedback specifics on where you need it, you, you feel it's unclear, confusing, needs reworking. Michael?
I think along with what David said a moment ago, a motion to, I can't repeat your, your motion, but that motion, in lieu of voting to support the process described in the CRC memo, is, is, is the better way to go. I have so many problems with the CRC menu, memo, that I, it's hard to begin to enumerate them. But I do want to point out one that is particularly difficult. This is in the same, microphone, yes. This is in the same section that David was reading from a moment ago. The CRC is understanding that the town staff.
Which paragraph?
Last paragraph on page two. Understanding that the town staff has been compiling a list of potential revisions, et cetera, including revisions to reflect the changes in the form of government. Fine, I have no problem with that. Changes in the town priorities since the approval of the master plan. Now, that may include those specific committee things that we've been talking about, but is, doesn't, changes in the priorities of the town, isn't that a huge area that requires considerable discussion? Who is to determine what the changes in the town priorities have been? Is there a list of those changes? Is that the town council's view of what the changes are? Is it our view of what the changes are? What does that mean? So the result of, the result of my question is that we can't deal with this particular memo as it's written, that we have to just go ahead and do our business.
I think as Ms. Henneke said, they were coming here not trying to tell us how to do our job, but the first two things that popped in my mind are that the capital projects and the green initiatives that we have taken very strong votes on, those are priorities to me in recent time and they need to be reflected. Now, she doesn't say that. That's what comes in my mind. But again, I think they were trying to be very clear that they weren't trying to tell us what the, you know, that's how, that's what will be determined as we come through our process. But I see capital projects and environmental sustainability as being two of them. Yeah.
Well, the council climate action goals, I think, have, you know, that, that, to my, my sense, the, the green initiatives.
Mm-hmm.
Again, that's, the town council has done that. And they can, I would, I would, again, ask that they submit so that we can streamline the work and move forward, what it is that they've done.
We have that.
That's great. Right. And so then that can be incorporated, I would hope relatively with minimal effort.
Simple, yes.
However, I agree, I think that, and, and the, the, the capital projects are the most important thing in my mind that's omitted here, which is, but, but I agree that this is, it's, or no, it seems to me that there is an element of having it both ways. The CRC memo and the town council, it's the planning board's job. We don't want to prescribe for you what you're doing. However, however, let's create lots of, and then, and let's create what this memo and its convolutions and it's, let's just start the work and, and, and present it and, and, and proceed. With, I don't think that we need to vote on this as written, that we've got the idea and we moving forward and let's get to it.
Well, I think we've moved on about taking a vote. What I'm looking for is specifics to give to CRC so they can rewrite this memo so we feel good about it. It is our work. It's our master plan, but let's look at the big picture here. Our goal is to approve something that can go to the town council and be adopted. I mean, you know, we have our basic job under the mass law, but now that we have a charter, we have like phase two. So that's what this memo is about. It's like you go do your phase one and then you give us an approved plan and we want to be prepared and up to speed and here's our two cents about what we hope will come to us so we can adopt it. This is phase two. So Maria?
So I guess trying to be productive here for feedback. I think steps four through eight are literally straight from the charter. That's what's a confusing portion, but we have to do those steps of like referring back and forth, but that's literally, someone mentioned like the chicken egg thing. Unfortunately, the charter was written at a time and there's stuff in the zoning, sorry, in the general bylaw that predated. So we have this weird back and forth from steps four to eight. So if you ignore that convoluted part, because we have to do those, the stuff before it is literally, it sounds to me like the CRC just wants to make sure town council isn't surprised by this final draft at the end and suddenly we're at a scramble.
Yeah.
I, as far as the details of how we communicate that from the CRC town council, we're going to work through that. We, we've discussed this at zoning subcommittee. We're trying to figure out, how do we even attack this? It's such a big, yet we're trying to make it a small task. So without getting into the weeds, like I think, Chris, you said it best, CRC is a conduit. They're just communicating where we are to the town council so that it's not suddenly at the end, it's a mad scramble because they don't approve it and we have to go back to base one. So, I mean, I do agree that there is some sort of gray sort of language in that paragraph you mentioned, Michael. And, and I, and I think maybe it is because they didn't want to prescribe things to us, but maybe that was too strong of a word, saying, you know, town priorities, because that's assuming a lot, you know, like we've agreed on what those are. So, I mean, we could comment back that we don't want strong language like that, like something's been decided already. But otherwise, if we just look at this as a general outline, that we're trying to make sure town council is kept up to date, so they're not just at the end scrambling. And then ignore the convoluted part from steps four through eight because it's literally almost administrative. We have to have public hearings in front of people. We have to refer back and forth. So I, yeah, I'm curious what other parts are really confusing and maybe we can pick those out and send them back to the, yeah, to the CRC as comments about what's wrong with this memo or what's confusing. Because I see it as just a rough outline. If they want us to approve it, or what are we doing? Vote to support? That sounds kind of vague too. We're just supporting it. We're not like saying this is written in stone. We're just saying, we support your eagerness to collaborate and to work together on this. What it is, we don't know yet. We know we want to try to keep both sides informed. And yeah, this was kind of dumped on our lap that we are suddenly updating the master plan, but it sounds like it's a necessity. So it is what it is.
I saw Jack's hand.
Well, I just wanted to say that I agree with Marie and I think Mike pointed out that verbiage in that particular paragraph is something that we can clearly comment on. You know, that's, that's, it's a loaded one there and perhaps they can just spell it out. You know, it includes, you know, the, the things you talked about, the green initiative and the public projects. And then, and, you know, just make it specific.
I think I saw Michael and you, Janet.
I, I think since the, by state law, the master plan is the property of the planning board. And by charter, we, the plan, the town council has to approve the, the master plan.
Adopt.
Hmm?
Adopt.
Adopt, sorry. Adopt. That we can, in good faith, make the master plan, we, we have been charged to update the master plan. And I think simply deciding, as we just have, to go ahead and do that and communicating to the town council via the CRC that we have, are undertaking the challenge to update, to read, update the master plan. And we will submit it to the town council when we're finished with it. And that is, it seems to me, according to the, the way the, the state law is written, that is our responsibility to do that. Since the state law makes no reference to who should approve it or adopt it or whatever, after the, 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 the planning board is done with it, we, I think can reasonably go ahead in good faith and do what the council wants us to do without getting bogged down in all the bureaucracy that the CRC has suggested we get involved in. And if the CRC feels or the, the council feels that they need to be consistently and continually updated about what the planning board is doing, then they're perfectly willing to come to meetings and report to themselves, to, to the council, to each other, to make comments as, as much as they want to. But to insert these other layers of bureaucracy into the process seems totally counterproductive and wasteful of everybody's time. And I don't think we should do it.
Can I just ask, what you're actually saying is too intrusive? What part?
Well, the fact that we have to go back and forth and then there's.
There is no back and forth. What are you, are you talking about the later numbers?
Yes. Yes.
Well, that's in the charter, that came exactly from the charter. That's why it's like forty-five days, and then...
Okay, so that's their problem, that's not our problem.
Well, it's still our problem, because we have to follow the charter.
We have to follow the charter by producing a master plan, which we will do.
But we're also a part of the town council, like, they appoint our members. That we're in that process right now. We're looking for our seventh member, and we're looking to them to select our seventh member, like, we are a branch of them.
No, we're not a branch of them at all. We're, we're, we're a separate body. Uh, the fact that they appoint us does not mean that we're a part of them. That's the whole separation of powers thing. You can't, you can't get into that.
But they adopt our work that we approve, and, and all the bylaws that we send, we send to them to approval. I mean, they, they're like our up, we, we're part of the process, we do good work, and then we send it up to town council, whether it be bylaw changes, roadway issues, um, you know, Chris could go on and on. We, most of our work, we have to send to town council to, for them to either actually approve it, or in this case, adopt it. So, of course, we want to have an agreed process where they're gonna, so we can update them, so that they can feel ready to, you know, they've also, with the six-month thing, they're saying they want it done timely, and I think what they're saying is, in good faith, and we're willing to do the work and stay updated as you work on it, and not be cold, and just have you deliver it to us, and then, you know, we're willing to get involved earlier to get it done quicker. I think that's all they're trying to do. And if you look at number three on page three in the middle, it says, "The chairs," meaning the planning board chair and the CRC chair, "may determine that CRC members should be asked to attend meetings of the planning board, or public hearings, or the charter-acquired working sessions." I, I think it's, this is vague speak, it's just saying, like, as the process rolls out, if it's determined that there needs to be more communication or less communication, then that will be determined, but as you do your good work, we just want to be kept up, and then we want an opportunity to give you our feedback before you actually approve it. So, I saw Maria's hand, and then I'll go with you. Yeah. I'm sorry, I was looking down that way.
Chris, can you correct me if I'm wrong? Are steps four through eight literally just following steps in the charter? It's not like they made up this sort of back and forth, where we have to have a public hearing and refer, you know, the four, those are literally, we have to follow those.
I was in that meeting, so I can clarify. Number four is, if you want to say, a little made up, but five and down is totally processed, and why four got rewritten a couple times was because of this, we have this, like, terrible way the charter was written, how they can give feedback, like, they can propose changes when they go to adopt it, but we don't want that, because we'll have already approved it, and then you get in this huge awful cycle. So, that was the part that was sort of created to go, okay, hey, I think that's more what they're trying to get town council to realize, okay, the charter says that, and then we've inserted this number four, this is where you get the opportunity to give your feedback and comment, right before planning board is going to approve it, so that we don't get in a cycle.
So, um, actually, four and five are made up, so that whole thing, so I think that, my concerns with four and five is sort of an idea of endless process, that we submit it to CRC, we, they have forty-five days, that might be extended by the town council, then we get some feedback, and then the council gets a report from CRC on it, recommendations, and the council deliberates and talks about sending feedback. Like, to me, I just, that looks like months, it could be months and months and months, because the town council does not speak with one voice, and so, those are my very specific terms. It's, that's not in the charter, that looks like a process that they'd like to engage in, but I, I was actually thinking, like, I always like to fix problems, and so, they want, the CRC and the town council want to be updated, councilors want to give feedback. One, one way to solve this would be have a master plan update website, and so, as different sections are being considered, we can just stick it on the website, people can comment, you know, the public can comment, town councilors can comment, and so, they're, the update is always available and seen, and so, they can keep themselves in the loop. And so, maybe that's, maybe that's the easy way to get around three and four. I don't really feel, at this point, at ten twenty-three at night, that I, four and five look really like convoluted and kind of bureaucratic, and I can see this thing going on forever, because, you know, you know, anyone on a committee can go on forever and discuss something, and I, you know, is the town council going to come back with, do they have to decide amongst themselves what revisions they want, and then agree on that? And that could take months, you know?
Just the website, that's getting in the weeds of our process, and I think, because that's not just for town council, but that could be totally, as we finish chapters, we put them up and have a comment board. But if you read number, it, it says forty-five day, like, this is not like a complic-, it's very simple, it's...
There's nothing in the charter.
No, no, but this, that's why they're trying to ask us, like, "It shall accomplish this review within forty-five days of the referral," and then...
That just...
And, and the other critical thing, and this is what I'm counting on CRC and the town council members to be, is this is, if it's a complicated issue, then it's not going to be tackled in the update. We're going to be finding this already as we go through it. We're going to be like, okay, this looks simple, oh, this is not simple, put it in the basket. Like, as soon as it gets into complicated and big rewrites, it's, it's not being done for now.
But councillors could look at provisions that aren't being changed and disagree with them.
They, they could, but that's for them to deal with, and they have to get back within forty-five days for us. We're not getting involved in their chat, that's, that's them.
I think the timing ques-, I think four and five are creating problems for people, but I think, I think we all want to work together and collaborate. The, the charter says, "Send your revisions to us," which is what David keeps on saying, is, where's the content? Like, you know, if you, if the town council during this process has very specific concern, definitely send it to us, we can do it, we can do it in real time, not at the end of the process.
And we, if...
But that, that's not here.
But they were waiting for us to have our process. We're, we're talking in a circle here.
Yeah, but I'm just trying to say is that, if you're, this is my...
We haven't determined our, this is where it steps into that.
Christine, I'm just trying to give my, I'm trying to give my specific feedback to the CRC, that these four, two paragraphs seem convoluted, they could go on forever, and I think they bother a lot of people.
And your suggestion was to do more feedback along the road? Okay, we, that's a comment we can do.
There's a hand raised on this side.
Yeah, and I see one on this side, too, so I was gonna say, Jack, and then, is it you? Okay, yeah, go ahead.
I'm, I'm, I, I'm kind of baffled, because when you look at necessary and obvious, it seems like almost editorial, and I, I just feel like we're sweating a lot of details here, making necessary and obvious changes to, to this update. I mean, to me, I could, you could almost give this to an editor, technical editor somewhere, and, and they would get ninety-five percent of it done, just folding things in, at probably, you know, ten thousand dollars. Uh, I, I don't understand, it's not a rewrite, an update of necessary and obvious changes, and I guess, I get, you do mention, as mentioned, three and four could allow a lot of, you know, endless loop sort of thing, but again, go back to necessary and obvious, how are you gonna, you're gonna, you know, talk about, well, that should be a semicolon versus a comma, sort of thing? It really shouldn't be that difficult. I mean, it really shouldn't, right? Necessary and obvious?
Right, right.
Yes.
And then, David, I see Chris, yeah.
How about if we put off this decision about whether you want to adopt this plan or not?
Mm-hmm.
And the next time you meet, I'll come back with my, you know, draft, very preliminary list of things that I think need to be changed in the master plan, that might give us a sense of what the scope of this is, and maybe that would help to answer some of the questions about this. And I'm also thinking, maybe you don't have to send comments back to CRC and town council. This is their document, they're offering it to you to see if you have any comments. You don't have to comment, you don't have to comment, you don't have to agree with it, you don't have to vote on it. So, why don't we just stop talking about it for tonight?
Yes.
And I'll send you, at some point, my rough list of things that I think very preliminary need to be changed, added, whatever, not inclusive at all, and that will help to make the conversation a little bit more on target, I guess is what I want to say.
Okay, and it would be helpful. I have a few recommendations that I've noted, to have specifics, because I do think we need to give them feedback.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, there's, there's some question as to whether, I mean, on the, on the, on the, on the board here, there's some question as to whether we do need to give them feedback. As Brestrup suggested a minute ago, it was, or maybe that wasn't the suggestion, but a, an idea, that we don't respond to this in any particular way at all, that, that it's their document, and they can do what they will with it. And that seems to me to be the best way to proceed. So, I don't think the question of, of whether we will, in fact, want to respond to this document has been settled, so I don't want you to think that it is accomplished.
I guess, as chair, I had two people come to us, the chair of the CRC, and the assistant town manager, and they said they wanted our feedback on this, so I'm just trying to reply back to them on, they brought us this memo, they explained how it came about, and their goals with it, and they just want to move forward with it, and go from CRC to town council, and get town council to approve the process, but the first thing the town council's gonna say is, well, what does the planning board think of this? And to have no comment just seems strange.
We've had a lot of comments.
Maria?
So, for people who want to send comments, just to send comments. Do we have to act as one?
No, right, I, I have a few that I would be willing to send forward.
Yeah, can we just send some comments to you, Chris?
Send your comments.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Whoever wants to...
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what we'll do. And when should we send them to you by?
Ms. Pam can tell you when the CRC is planning to deliver this to town council. I forget the date. I want to say it's the twenty-seventh of January, but I'm not sure.
I'm not sure, I think it is. Um, I just want to say that the purpose of the memo...
I'm sorry, I totally want you to speak, but you do have to come up to the, you know how it works.
I have to. Okay. The green light is on. I believe, I mean, I was at several meetings, I didn't write the memo, but I was at several meetings where we talked about it. The major purpose was to say that the CRC is a committee of the town council, which has been delegated by the town council to deal with these items, recognizes the supreme authority of the planning board. That was the emphasis. However, we do want to adopt it, and, and the difference between approve and adopt it. So, the question was, how do you do that with the acknowledge that the planning board, this is their document? So, it does get a little bit convoluted, and one of the issues that I think she was dealing with was, when do we have the public hearings, or, because there's things in the charter, and you know, she knows that charter. So, there's a thing that we can't, and I don't know why, can't have a public hearing until after you have finalized the document. However, this memo says, we could have some hearings, because the idea is, you don't want to just pop it on the town council, but the town council doesn't want to pop it on the, on the public, so you want a smooth system. And the idea was, a minor update of the necessary and obvious, not a big redoing of the plan, not something that should cause tremendous difficulty, take over all of your time, and cost a lot of money. And so, it does get, I do admit, I read it for the third time in there, and when I came to that word, "change priorities," I circled it, because that is an interesting sentence. I think that that, I don't think it meant anything big, but it could mean something big, so I think that that's something that you should comment on. So, it was, how do you, how does the town council adopt something without it going around and around forever? She was trying to cut the bureaucracy in a bureaucratic state memo, but to say that once you have, you, you write it, the planning board does it, it goes to CRC, who has been deputized by the council to look at these things, they go over all of it, come up with some suggestions, go back to you, and then, when you have the final document, your final document, it goes to town council, and they vote it up or down. They don't vote, well, I guess we do vote, we vote to it...
Your feedback and recommendation, like speaker, at that point, that's when the town council says they have issues with things, and it comes back to us before we take a final vote.
Okay, I'm not sure about that, I have to, I, I think it did say, at some point, the town council just accepts it or doesn't accept it.
That's after we've approved it.
Yeah, after you've approved it.
Yeah.
They can't vote, town council can't vote, until after the planning board has taken necessary, interesting feedback, and has made whatever changes they decide to make.
And where does the public meeting come in?
For this, there's this paragraph in there that says that we can't have a hearing until after you, the planning board, have voted it, but it then said, but we could have, the town council could have some forums.
Isn't the point of a public hearing to possibly make changes in the document that's being considered?
Well, I would think, but I will tell you, this is clearly written in terms of what the charter says.
The charter has bad writing in it, but they didn't realize this until they started to look into this. So, this isn't how they want it.
No.
This is the way it's written.
That's it, just...
David?
I'd like to propose, in, consistent with my understanding of what Chris Brestrup said, that we move on from this matter, that we, that, that there's been a lot of discussion here, that including some feedback to the, for the CRC memo, and that there's other business that we have to address tonight, and that we move on.
Let's move on, and we'll get you comments by Friday. No, and thank you, Ms. Pam. Um, yeah, luckily, hope, there's not too much more we have to deal with here. So, if we move to zoning subcommittee, item seven A, I'm pleased to announce that we took elections at zoning subcommittee, and Maria has been voted as the chair, and Janet is the vice chair, so I am turning to Maria to give a report.
This will be short and sweet, we already discussed most of it, because we spent most of the time discussing what we were just discussing. Although, one person did show up from Backyard ADUs, literally his website is backyardadus.com, and he has these great units that can go in backyards as accessory detached dwellings, and they're like two hundred dollars a square foot and less, it's, you should look into it, and I'm, I'm gonna keep communicating with him and learn from him, lessons learned after you've just built, built a few of them.
How big are they?
Um, between five and seven hundred square feet. So, they're great, infill sort of housing opportunities, but otherwise, yeah, all we did was do exactly what we were... Sorry.
Sounds like fun.
So, could I just add a little piece? I, I, I'm, so we just did, we did do all that, and I, I, and then, I really want to, the zoning subcommittee, we've been doing hard work, and previous zoning committees and planning boards have done work on zoning amendments that we think are important, and I would love, and I was very disturbed after that meeting, that we're not going to continue working on it, and the council's not going to look at zoning, it looks like it could be a year, and so, it'll be almost two or three years before we've had any zoning changes, and I don't understand the reason for that, and so, I just want to highlight that as an issue, and I'd like to talk about it more in the zoning subcommittee, but I, I really feel like there's things that we think are important, and we could just move them up to the town council, and they could sit there, and we can continue the work that we do, and work with, with Mr. Mora and things like that, but I just didn't want to just have all that work sidelined, and we all sit there stagnantly, and that's why I'm suggesting, so, that, that was a piece that I really was, just to put in people's heads, but not to discuss, right?
Jack? Oh.
That's Mike, actually.
Oh.
I was just gonna say, I, I do like Janet's idea about not encumbering the, the zoning subcommittee with, with the master plan, and, and having, you know, like, ad hoc groups of us, you know, attacking different chapters, but again, you know, this is...
And Chris is...
You, you have been saying, it, Chris is going to do most of the heavy lifting, so, then, you know, we, but, I guess we want to help, we want to help, and I guess, you know, we just have to get some ed, our initial comments to you, so that's, you know, the first step, I think we promised that to you, anyway.
So, now you've decided you want to move a... So now you've decided you want to move ahead with it, so now I'm going to start moving ahead with my work. And I'll bring it to you as I have it ready. And we can talk about this again on the January 29th.
Great. Michael?
Two things. Now, if Chris is going to start bringing us things, is the us, the zoning subcommittee, or is the us, the planning board, or is the us, a new committee that we're going to create to deal with this kind of, with this particular issue, as was suggested a minute ago?
We're going into process again.
But if...
It's important.
Initially, I could bring it to you, all of you. And then, when you feel overburdened by it, and you want to direct it to a subcommittee, you can create the subcommittee at that time. But you don't have to do it right now.
Sounds good.
Okay.
And you had a second thing?
I did.
That was, oh, okay.
I know what it was. Sorry. I also wanted to support Janet's suggestion that we go right ahead with certain zoning bylaw amendments that we find are important. Whether the council takes them up or not is their problem, not ours. If we think there's a zoning issue that needs to be addressed, like affordable housing, or parking, or whatever, whatever issue we think we want to address, that is addressed through a zoning change, zoning bylaw change, I think the zoning subcommittee should bring it forward to us, and we should act on it, and forward it to the council, and they can do what they wish with it.
Okay. So, Chris, item seven, old business. Is there any old business?
I don't think so. I have an old business update. Really quickly, those yellow bollards in the parking lot of the Bank of America disappeared, and it was like completely sealed over. It was very, it was exciting.
As they should.
I just looked at it, and I was like, they're gone. So, so our work has resulted in something.
Until it comes back again.
It feels like a muscle disperse.
Yeah. New business, item eight, number A. Chris, that's the chapter 61A withdrawal request, property of the, I don't even know how you say that.
Sala.
Sala.
So this topic is being discussed internally in town hall, and we plan to bring it back to you on January 29th.
What's the discussion? Whether to purchase, whether to exercise the right for a trojus?
Well, I think that's always an option for the town to consider, so.
But, so, excuse me. That's a town council decision. It's presented to the planning board. What's the reason for that?
It's presented to both the planning board and the conservation commission. And the planning board can make a recommendation to town council as to whether you think the property is worth the town going after, trying to purchase it, or not. And you base that on various criteria. So I can send, actually, I should have sent this with the packet, which I didn't think about. I will send you more information on chapter 61, and what the options are, and why you might consider certain properties to be worthwhile to acquire for the town. And then we'll have a better discussion about this on the 29th.
Could we have information about the farmland, and the quality of soils, and all that stuff? Is it, some information about this, if we're going to make a recommendation, I'd like to know more about the farm itself.
I can ask for that. I can't have the, what should I say? I can't order to have the soils tested, but if there's material available, I will obtain it for you.
Confession here, I was involved for some of the Salza due diligence, mostly in Hadley, though. But, yeah, so the property has been reviewed and cleaned up. There were some solid waste issues there, but that was, that was about it. So, it's just personal knowledge.
That's different from whether the soils are suitable for farming.
Right.
So that's a different question, right?
Yeah.
You guys good for now?
Yes.
And then I'll come back? Okay. And no other questions? Okay. So we can move to item B, timing of receipt of permit application materials. Do you want to do that tonight, Janet?
No.
Okay. So we'll move that to...
Excuse me.
Oh, sorry.
No, I, this was, I had proposed, I'd like to propose that for consideration, specifically that the planning board require materials that are scheduled for a meeting to be submitted prior to the publication of its agenda. So that's prior to Friday, the Friday before the Wednesday for a meeting. And that any material submitted after that relating to that, we can, we can table or continue the meeting at our discretion. I'd like that concrete proposal for our consideration whenever we get to it.
But do they get sent to us, and then we decide, or?
Well, for example, no. For example, today, with the Main Street, the modification to the site plan review that we had approved in August, we received the development application report, which is significant. We received that yesterday by email. I did not have time between yesterday and tonight to read that, this material. And so they can present, the applicant can present what they want to, but we, we should not be pressured. We should, you know, to render a decision when there has been material that has not been included in our packet. And that, I think that we should responsibly set a deadline and notify the public, notify potential applicants. And, you know, if there's, once a hearing is scheduled, if material's submitted after such and such a date prior to that hearing, you know, they may or may not be considered, and we'll continue the hearing.
Are you talking about the development application report?
That was, that was the example.
That's what came, because that's an internal. So we have to be clear whether we're just talking about submitted materials from the applicant, or stuff that's coming from in-house from Ms. Bessrup.
So I have to apologize that that came so late. I've been very, very busy lately, and I just didn't have time to do it. But I understand your point. And at any time, I feel, what should I say, obligated to send you materials as they become available. You can make a decision that, we received this document too late, I haven't had time to read it, I can't vote on this tonight. That's a perfectly legitimate thing to say at the public hearing. And I don't have any problem with that. But I feel like if I've completed a report, and it pertains to something that you're going to be talking about that night, I have an obligation to send it to you. And again, you have perfect right to say, no, I haven't had time to read it. So I guess, that's my, that's my response.
And so perhaps, so the application report, you know, I'm thinking of that 60-page memo we received from Bacon Wilson the day before, or the day of one of the Amherst Hill hearings. That happens almost every meeting, whether there, who produces, whether it's internal or external, I don't honestly know all of that. But, but, but I think that we, a standing rule that material's not submitted in a timely fashion shouldn't, should not pressure the planning board, and I feel like that, that that's the current state.
I, I don't want to be the gatekeeper. I don't want to be the person who says, this thing came in too late. I am not going to give it to the planning board because it came in on Friday instead of Thursday, because I think that's your decision to make. This thing came in too late, we can't consider it tonight. Because there may be something that I don't know, that you think is really important, that you need to have for that meeting. And I don't want to be the person making that decision.
It also puts you in a weird place. Like, I think of emails that shoot in that last day. Like, we hate getting them, but you read them, and you know, and then she, like, then we don't know. I don't know. I hate feeling rushed, but yet I still want to have the information, and then make the choice whether or not I, like, there is the point, always say, I didn't have time to read this. I mean, we can even take time out, or it just doesn't go. Like, I knew this stuff that came in, I knew this wasn't really going to move tonight, like, in a vote, so I knew everybody would still have time to read it before we actually have to vote. But you have a good point about, like, application stuff, like this certain stuff clients, like, when we ask, like, tonight, we said, we need stuff from them, right? Well, and we always say, okay, and now we're pushing you to February 5th. Well, it should be clear that actually, that stuff shouldn't be coming to us on the 5th. There should be a rule, and it's very clear, that we expect it to be there by, you know, Friday at 5:00 or something.
So I guess we're talking about my motion, too.
So, exactly. So I'm a little, David, I know you jumped in, and we're doing it. Janet had already come and told me that she had an actual motion she wanted to do. So I'm going to let her do her motion, too, and then maybe we won't take action on it, maybe we will. But I think we need to think about this, and Chris, too. Maybe you can think of where the line can be drawn. Go ahead, Janet.
So, David, you make, you talked about this months ago, I get this as a point. And so I actually did a motion, and I, because I was thinking about this problem in terms of the timing. And I was, my motion is, I moved that the planning board add a rule to its regulations that applicants for permits must submit all materials nine days before the scheduled hearing date. If the materials are submitted later, the applicants will be required or urged to agree to continue their hearing to the next available date. So this is like the Monday, it's not, it's not a week earlier, it's nine, it's the Monday. So that would give the planning department two or three days to pull your packet together, to write your report. It doesn't say that, you know, the fire chief's report can't come in at the last minute. But, you know, it's, there's so many reasons, you know, people are coming to us for permits, they want them. They should get their applications together. They should get them in, in time, in a way that the planning department can get it in a regular way, they can conduct their lives and other priorities. I think, you know, lawyers are used to these kind of deadlines all the time, and I think we need to push it back. And I would, you know, if the, if we got our packet sent out on Wednesday, you know, I could, you know, either deliver it, or we'd have like a week to look at stuff. And we wouldn't have this barrage of emails coming in and information, because I can't think about it and digest stuff and put it all together without time. And I think that maybe we could try that for six months, and see if we can get better practice in the community and for ourselves, and less chaos. I also think we'll spend less time at hearings and have fewer hearings, if we have more materials earlier and more complete applications. Because we always ask for more stuff, but we don't have to get it, you know, weeks and weeks, you know, at the last minute.
I'll second that motion.
Does that...
Can you send me that in writing?
Definitely.
Me? What's the conservation commission, I know that they have more strict smittle kind of, and do you, anybody know what those are?
No, but I can find out.
I would think we'd want to parallel that, to some extent.
I agree. And I just, I think Janet said nine days. I just wanted to ask, Chris, is, how, do you think that's too far out? Would that even work? So if we meet on Wednesdays, it's like a week and a half before?
I think it is too far out, and I think it's very, the whole process is very fluid and very flexible. And sometimes when someone really wants to get something done quickly, like Mr. Robleski tonight, he absolutely begged to be able to have his public hearing on January 15th. That was very important to him. I don't know what his reasons for that were, but we pushed to have the hearing on January 15th. He didn't submit his material until December 20th. So, you know, that was only like three weeks that we had, and it was Christmas time and New Year's in between. So, we didn't have time to examine the application, talk to Mr. Mora, think carefully about whether the special permit was needed or not. There's a lot of communication that goes on. You know, ideally, we have at least a month between the time of submission and the time of the planning board public hearing. But even so, we have a long list of other things that we're working on that have nothing to do with the planning board, that we have to fit the planning board in with all these other things. So we try to do things as much, as quickly as we can, and fit it into whatever else we're doing.
You're prioritizing many layers.
So, yes, you could say that. So, having a strict rule of having everything submitted nine days in advance, that...
Not you, not you.
No, but it sounds like they submit up most of their information even further back than nine days, but the clog sometimes happens in the actual planning department.
Yes, that's correct.
Because they have to analyze it, run it by other people, and before it even gets to us, they're already finding things that need to be done, more information, fixing things on forms. And then Chris starts writing reports for it to go to us.
So in this case, if we had said, you know, planning department, you have to have your report in nine days in advance, that would be when? Last Monday?
Last Monday, yeah.
So this public hearing could have occurred.
It's not for...
You just wouldn't have had your analysis by the planning department in front of you when you heard the material. Now, in the end, it turned out you're going to continue, so you'll have plenty of time to read it. But it's just kind of, the way we operate is not, maybe it should be rigidly according to a clock and a time schedule, and we can try that, but I'm thinking it's really going to be hard to make it work.
So it wasn't for the planning department nine days before, it was the applicants to get all their materials in nine days before the hearing. I'm trying to clear space for you guys, too. Does that work?
We can try that, but sometimes we find that through our analysis, oh, they didn't submit their management plan. So we call them up and say, hey, you didn't submit your management plan. Get it in by the time we send the packets out, or whatever. And they do that. And so you have the management plan when you have your public hearing, so it helps to streamline things. So I'm willing to try this, but I think it's going to be challenging to make it work.
These are, these are big deal developers, mostly. Aren't, shouldn't they be responsible for knowing what the rules are, that they, that they need to get their, their plan in before a certain time? I, you know, I understand that part of your job is to make it possible for these things to happen. On the other hand, the developer needs to take a certain amount of responsibility for following the timelines that are established, the procedures that are established, as long as they're clearly established. And it seems to me that this is an opportunity to clearly establish a timeline, which any reasonable developer ought to be able to follow if he or she is paying attention.
Let me ask this. Are you proposing to put this in your rules and regs? Or are you just proposing to vote for it tonight and try to make it work?
I, I was, I was proposing it as a change to the rules and regs, but I think that, I don't think we're ready to vote on it tonight. I think we want to think about it more. I'd love to think about it when I'm having more, some sleep.
I'm glad you said that, because I was going to say, I'm not comfortable with voting on this right now, because my main concern is, yeah, our own comfortableness and getting the information in a timely and adequate manner. But I don't want to put a burden on Ms. Bessrup. She's got enough on her plate right now. I think that's why we're here at 11:00 at night. And what I'm hearing is, they submit their information, and then it's, it's, it's in there, and you're grinding it out as fast as you can, balancing many things, and coming back to the developers and saying, oh, and we need this, and we need this, you need to change this. I just talked to Rob Mora, you need this. And it's just going to be a burden on her, because she's going to be panicked, my God, I have to ask them for more stuff, and I'm past the nine days, and then she's just going to be stressed that she's failing us.
So that's where I feel like...
Can you reschedule the hearing?
Needs to be to you, to say, hey, we didn't get this till yesterday, or we just got this at the public hearing. We can't deal with this now. We haven't had a time to think about it. So that's what I would prefer, is if the planning board said clearly, I need this in more in advance, so I can read it over the weekend, or whatever it is you have, and not have it, not have us be the gatekeepers. Because there are times when things absolutely need to get to you immediately. My conversation with Joel Bard this afternoon, you know, that was, that was a new thing. So there's always stuff coming in at the last minute.
So how about we think about it, but especially you, Chris, in your quiet moments, we're looking for things that help you. I think that's where this is coming from with David and Janet. Like, yeah, we're trying to help ourselves, but we want to help you. And if you can come up with something that would streamline this to make it better for you, and Pam, and the rest of your department, then we'd love to hear it. Does that sound okay for tonight, everybody? Okay. Yeah, Jack?
I'd have to go back to the Salza thing.
Oh, jeez.
I did not, I did not look at that property. It's on the wrong side of 116. I just want to say, I know nothing about it.
Oh, so we can be dirty as hell. You don't know. All right. Thank you. Good clarification. It could be a super fun site. It could be a super fun site. Good, okay, clarify. Yep, okay, great, thank you. And we, I think handled item eight, number C. Chris, I think we're all set with the schedule for now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Topics, non-anticipators or any other new business?
I do have a few.
Okay, great. Number nine, Form A, A and R subdivision applications?
Yes, we do have a Form A.
Oh, God!
I don't think it's complicated and I think you sort of know all about it already. And if I'm lucky, Pam has created a nice little map here, so pass around, or pass around the map, I will explain it and Pam will take around the big map.
Janet?
Oh, sorry. So this is the property that you may have read about in the newspaper, it's on the corner of University Drive and one, and Route 9. It's right opposite the Chinese restaurant and it is, it had been formerly talked about for Walgreens. Anyway, Barry Roberts is interested in creating a mixed-use building on that corner and there are, I think there are three properties, or four properties there. So he wants to combine...
That's, I see four.
He wants to combine three of the properties into one property. Currently, there's a brick ranch-style house on that property and so it was used as a, you know, single-family house and now he has a proposal to do something else with the property. But this A and R plan that you're looking at tonight is the proposal to combine the three properties that are in the PRP zoning district.
PRP, okay.
This project is coming before the zoning board of appeals on January 23rd.
So he's proposing, I'm sorry, a mixed-use building?
Oh, mixed-use building. I think there are 72 dwelling units and an office for, I understand it's going to be a doctor's office on the ground floor.
So you said three, I see three and a chunk of the fourth.
The chunk of the fourth goes into it by itself.
Maybe a little piece of the fourth that's, yes, like...
No, this, this triangle?
The end of the little wedge.
Yeah, so it's three lots and like I'm saying, a piece of the fourth, that's a, you know. So it impacts all four and the fourth piece shrinks.
Yeah.
And it's the dead, oh, there must be an easement through it too. Is there an easement through the, the fourth lot? Just wondering. That's why they're probably not using it.
It was supposed to be a road that went through south.
Right.
It was going to connect to, they called, called the southeast bypass or something like that.
Yeah, it was going to connect to 116th.
It was going to connect to 116th.
Right.
It never went through and this is a random...
I was just wondering, because if there was an easement, that's one of the reasons why they may not be utilizing that lot, because there's an easement.
You mean the one on the right?
You know, like, yeah, like...
It's a different zoning district. It's RN, I believe, and the others is...
Okay. So this becomes PRP then? What happens with this little...
I think that is PRP now.
Well, that's, that's the little triangle piece that's part of the, so the line just cuts, it's a lot in two zones. Okay, great. Anyone have any other questions?
So, so...
Yes, you do.
I think that this is another project that is looking for a waiver of the parking requirement and there's going to be, you know, like tons of small apartments, you know, fitting, you know. So I, that's, so I think this issue is going to keep coming up as the waivers are granted and that pushes the need for the zoning bylaw change.
Which will help us, give us examples of how these other buildings are working, like University.
But that has no, there has no options.
So far, University, I've been checking, it's working. So, but that will build our, our information. Okay, so do they have to vote or do we just say okay?
Would you say that you're authorizing Ms. Gray-Mullen to sign this A and R plan?
Yes.
Okay, great. ZBA applications, is that you, Pam?
There is. I don't think we have told you about, there's a request for a special permit for the use of a recreational marijuana retailer. It's going to be located at 328 College Street and the name of them is RC Retail Amherst LLC. So that's going to go in front of the zoning board on February 13th.
All right, thanks. It's pretty far down.
It's by Spirit House. It's just across the driveway from Spirit House.
In that long strip mall. It's on the end, I think, isn't it, of the strip mall? Number 11, SPP, SPR sub-applications.
I don't think there are any except for the new special permit that's going to come in for Ms. Roblesky.
Okay. Okay, so section 12 is the committees, does anyone have anything vital they need to report?
Nope.
Michael has one.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Just briefly.
No, no, that's why...
The CRC has started its deliberations for this, this round, the largest of which is a request for a million and a half dollars from the library for historic, for preservation of the historic records that it contains.
Oh, archive stuff.
Did you mean CPA? Did you mean CPA?
Yeah, you said CRC.
What did I say?
I think you said CRC.
I'm sorry.
It's late, so we're speaking in vegetables.
CPAC.
Yeah.
So that's, that's one thing. The other thing that's of interest to us on the planning, on the planning board is the notion that the, rather than, rather than the CPAC allocating monies specifically for individual housing, affordable housing projects, that it becomes, that it becomes a, an allocation directly to the housing trust, so that therefore that organization can respond more quickly to individual needs as they, as they might come up in between rounds of CPAC evaluations. We haven't decided on that. I'm not sure whether that's a good idea or not and if anybody has any particular interest in that issue, I'd be glad to hear it so that I can convey that information. There's, it seems to me there's reasonable arguments on both sides of that issue and I don't want to go through them now, because it's 11:00, but if anybody wants to know more about that, let me know.
May I go back to the ZBA for a minute?
Sure.
We know, we're reasonably sure that Valley CDC is going to submit their comprehensive permit proposal. Actually, back up. They're going to submit a letter to the state for a letter of eligibility on the, what do they call it, enhanced SRO or supportive housing project on North Hampton Road. We think that's going to happen before the end of January, so that means they'll be coming to the zoning board of appeals sometime in the spring, but I wanted to bring you up to date on that.
That doesn't come to us. Okay. Can you, can you repeat the amount for CPAC for the library?
1.5.
Yeah, it's presumably it'll be an amount that would be bonded over, over a 10 or maybe five or 10-year period.
It's 1.5 for what? For archival?
It go, it goes to the basic building fund, but it's earmarked for specifically for creation of an archival room and reasonable equipment for that room. It's based on a percentage of the total cost. They decided that, I think it was 10.28% of the building, new building proposal was devoted to the archives and that money is 10.2% of the total cost of the, of the town's contribution to the building. Does that make sense?
Kind of.
Okay.
That's great. They need it badly. If you've ever been up there, I'm up there a lot and it's not good. All right, so that's wonderful. Any other, okay, seen on, report of chair, non-report of staff, non? We've reported enough. Adjournment, do I hear a motion to end? We are ending at 11:07. Is that really a record? I'm like, how is this possible? Thank you, Amherst Media, if you're alive back there.